Continued from previous meetings, we also have one public hearing that is being continued and that is 225 Pond Street, the McDonald's project. Is that right, Peter?
That is correct.
Okay, so I'm just going to announce now if anyone was here specifically for 225 Pond Street, which is the McDonald's, we will not be discussing that project tonight. It will be continued. So on that note, though, we will continue to the first item that is on our agenda, which is 100 Chestnut Street. And I will let Peter introduce that, and I believe you need to reread the public hearing. Is that correct?
Correct. So the applicant in this case applied for a special permit concerning parking. And also losing majority of the board, I readvertise the application for the site plan approval and special permits. So currently, right now, after we listen to the record, now all the board members become 40 members on this case. So with that said, I will move to the public hearing for the record. The National Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, June 23rd, 2022, at 7:15 PM by a video Zoom conference at the address of this meeting. Do you hear the petition of Basedstone Ashland LLC requesting design plan review, site plan review for Chapter 40A, Section 6 of the Massachusetts zoning act in Chapter 288.6 Wildwood mixed-use district. Section 9.6, excuse me, design plan review in Section 9.4 site plan review, the Ashland bylaws as filed with the application on June 17, 2021. Further, the planning board will hear the petition requesting a special permit by per the Ashland zoning bylaws. Section 9.3 special permits, Section 5.1.2 schedule of parking area requirements for the reduction in required parking as filed in the application on May 31st, 2022. The applicant is proposing the development of 174 apartment homes and approximately 10,500 square feet of retail. The project proposed is to, excuse me, the project proposes to provide 357 parking spots for both residential and commercial use. The proposed spaces are nine by 20 feet. The property in question is located at 100 and 130 Chestnut Street, Sessions Map 20 lots 271 and 273 in the Ashland Wildwood mixed-use special district area A. Now with that said, to give a quick update of what's going on with this project, since the last time this applicant, Basedstone Development, represented tonight by Mr. Roy McDowell, his two sons, and Matt Marata from Icon Architectures. They have met with the Design Review Committee, the Ashland Design Review Committee, who actually also joined us here tonight. And at some point, if they do have a forum, they're going to have to open their meeting. But with that said, the Ashland Design Review Committee has met with them twice, and they did send over some comments. These were received by the planning office earlier this week, and they were sent out as soon as possible to planning board members and over to the applicant. In addition to receiving the comments from the Design Review Committee on 100 Chestnut Street, the planning board also received third-party civil review comments from GCG Associates Incorporated concerning this project. Please note that these comments from the civil review engineer were not, were received yesterday and were sent out immediately. However, at tonight's meeting, obviously, the applicant knew the board had enough time to review the letter through GPS. That review and the letter, we can talk about it at the next meeting, but I just kind of wanted to make note in the public eye that those are the two elements that I have received in the few documents pertaining to this project. So with that said, Mr. McDowell, do you want to give us an update? And Chair Tricia Eaton, they want to, after the update from Mr. McDowell, we can give Kathy the ability to open her public meeting with the Design Review Committee.
Yep, sounds good.
Well, thank you. Thank you to the board. Yes, Peter, we did have a very productive two meetings with the Design Review Committee, and we did receive their comments today this afternoon. We really haven't had time to review those, but we'll be doing that shortly and get back to both boards on that. We did also get the stormwater reports yesterday, sent those to our engineers. They will start studying those and have responses to all the comments by the peer review for our next meeting and ideally prior to the meeting. And we have updated presentation for this evening as well.
That's fine. You can go ahead with the presentation.
Okay. Peter, could you allow Todd to run it?
Sure.
Thank you.
I picked Matt, but I guess I was wrong.
Yeah, well, Matt's going to be doing something as well. He'll be speaking.
Peter, while we're doing that, should I have Kathy open her meeting so that we just have that taken care of?
Yes, please do that.
Yeah, Kathy, why don't you go ahead?
Sure, I'm going to officially open the Design Review Planning Board concurrent meeting, this review section of it for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Todd, I believe I've made you a co-host.
Yes, thank you very much. I was just waiting that meeting to open.
We also have Todd?
Yes, you should be able to see the screen.
You've all seen a few of these images before. There's quite a few new ones as well. So this is sort of an opening as to the frontal view of the project. If we could go to the next one, Todd. This is a letter the planning board had sent to the Design Review Committee, which we've spent significant time with them, going over all of these issues and many others that you'll notice in the letter from the Design Review Committee as well. Just a brief overview, we've all seen this number of square feet, the number of units, mix of bedrooms, amenities, space, parking, et cetera. Again, the proposed site plan, which you've seen this many times as well. Now I'd like to turn it over to Matt Marata, who can discuss some of the color changes that have been proposed by the Design Review Committee, and we thought we'd go over those with both boards this evening. Matt, please.
Thank you, Roy. Matt Marata with Icon Architecture. So you guys have previously seen these images, but some of the things we discussed with the Design Review Committee was taking the second-story windows within that two-story retail kind of elevation, although it's not truly two stories retail, making the windows more consistent behind where there are units. We've looked at introducing some more wood to the pergola area. We've also looked at some alternate colors for building two along Chestnut Street to help further break down the mass and define this as more of a village-like feel. And I'm sure I'm missing, we looked at the garage screening, which we'll talk about, and a number of other small things. Next. So this is the updated image where we, instead of a white trellis, we now have the real wood look trellis along with the posts at the entrance to the retail. Next, we also changed the windows at the second floor within the wood look to the more traditional double-hung instead of the kind of the triple-glazed look there that now is more referential to what's behind it being units. Next. On the backside, this is what you guys had seen. Next. We had talked about reintroducing the vertical siding at the gable end. I think that was a preferred option. And that was the, and then we've also started introducing the updated garage screens and tree heights in these images as well. Next. On the front elevation, you guys had, this is actually a little bit previous before. We had updated the wood look to be a darker color, which I believe is the next image. So this is what you guys had last seen. And then, next. Looking back, showing some of the townhouses in the background, expanded view.
This is the alternate blue as well, Matt.
Okay, so we also started, we also looked at this part of the building to start exploring alternate colors, which is a request from the Design Review Committee. This, this one in particular has just an alternate blue color, which is a complementary color within the hardy siding color range.
Click back just so you can compare it. That's the previous.
Yeah, right. So this, this color is a little bit more vibrant, blue has a little bit more pink to it, where the other one is a little bit more gray, which we thought worked well with the darker wood tones on this side. Next. The other alternate was to look at a green tone, which we also felt like could work well with the darker wood tones as well. And next. On the backside of the building, we started looking at the screens. Next, and the trees are updated to show the correct heights. Next. Looking back from Chestnut Street, we updated perspectives to illustrate truer tree heights from day one. Next. Again, updating the tree heights on the perspectives. Next. Just showing here that we are continuing those wood columns around the rest of the building, wherever we have them. Next. Just an updated shot from the front, showing the overall elevation.
Matt, just want to want you to note the window changes.
Yep, we've mentioned before the window changes, just showing that again. Next. We were also asked to, instead of the, we had presented the perspectives that we had shown planning board with the existing townhouses passed out. The Design Review Committee had asked us at the last meeting to do a photo montage to show as accurately as we could, obviously, a representation of our proposed building in shot, looking from this central courtyard in the, in the development behind us. And this is the superimposed image. You can see the line of arborvitae trees that's going to provide a hedge-like screening and the rest of our building peeking up behind it. On the garage screening, we did discuss whether, what the correct materiality would be for these. We presented both a dark gray and a white option, which I believe is, yep, next one. And I think what we came to the conclusion on was that a stainless steel system makes the most sense, so that way it doesn't interfere, it doesn't chip like paint wood, and it's overall just a better quality material. Next.
Not sure, Matt, I think we can move on to the next one, the landscape.
Roy, do you want to take over here?
Is Tom Meiner with us this evening?
Is Tom on?
I'm here.
So we rendered the landscape, Tom, if you just want to talk a little bit about the changes.
Yep. At the request of the Design Review Committee, we did a more thorough planting plan, showing shrubs around the building in the courtyards and at the perimeter of the site, getting, going through and trying to get as many natives as we could get in there at the time. Do you want to go to that plan? There you go. You can see we've got quantities and species to every, every shrub and tree. And we've also got a planned data that shows we've got 61% native material and about little over a half an acre of lawn. And our tree count is 185 total trees, a combination of shade trees, flowering trees, and evergreen trees. Required for parking was one, one tree per every eight spaces. We required around 40, and we're showing, I believe there's eight, I can't really read it here.
It says 15 shade trees, 55 shades and flowering trees.
Yeah, and then there's another 55 around the perimeter of the parking. I think that's, I think that's covered all the, and we updated the photo images. And so you get a good idea of the trees and all the shrubs that we're using.
We should mention, Tom, that after meeting with the Design Review Board and their comments relative to the landscape, that we've made some changes to the plan and the types of material, I think more in keeping with what the concerns were of the Design Review Committee.
Correct.
I can speak to the photometric plan. So the Design Review Committee asked us to provide a full photometric plan, which just shows, and it kind of details where inside the pink is kind of the brighter spots, and as you get outside, there's less, and as we, we made sure not to be, have any light pollution pouring off-site. So that's one of the things we made sure that was the case, and it is. We can provide this to you in a full-size set of plans as well, so you can look in detail. One of the other things that the Design Review Committee asked us to do is locate some EV charging stations. And so what we've done is we've put them in areas where we have proximity to the building, but where also they can be expandable over time. So we have condos front of these locations. And then as EV charging station demand goes up, as it most likely will in the future with the kind of transition to electric cars, we'll be able to continue that kind of chain down these parking spots on the front along Chestnut, and then come around the corner and go down along Queen Isabella. So we want to put them in a place that, you know, we can expand them easily. So that's kind of where we're showing them right now. If the board has comments on that, we can discuss that. Snow storage was another item that was brought up, and these are our snow storage locations. Roy, do you want to talk to this or?
Well, we believe especially the one to the right, because we have a riprap slope there, we feel that the majority of the snow would go in that location, because we could probably send that up quite a bit in height. And we feel this would handle anywhere from a five to six-inch storm. And anything larger than that, we would truck it offsite.
This is the bus shelter location that we had previously discussed. So this is an updated rendering that include, that we went through a variety of options with the Design Review Committee, which I'll show you on the next slide. And this is the design that they leaned towards. And we added these, I don't know if they're plexiglass or glass walls to block the wind on both sides, and a light that, whether it's connected to power source or if it's a solar light, we'll figure that out, but that we on a timer set to a time, so it doesn't run too late at night. These were the options that we had shown the Design Review Committee and through their input, we kind of ended up coming up with a design like this, just, just to show you back. Again, this is the pros dog park area. We discussed potentially pulling it back, I think we did, just out of the interbuffer zone of the wetlands area to, we still need to get approval from CONCOM, but we want to address that, and we do a black chain, chain link fences, similar you see on the left. Here, we went through, we flagged the trees that we would try to save and remain in the dog park, and keep it really of a natural surface, get rid of the invasives in the dog park and surrounding that area. If there's a similar park here on the left where that was done, and they kept trees, there's a little more grade change in this one, but down below, you can see another area where there's kind of trees growing in the dog park, and it kind of creates a more natural environment. We would potentially add some dog, either large boulders or ramps or some other kind of agility equipment in there for the dogs, and have trash receptacles and bags available so people can take care of the dogs when they go to the bathroom. Again, I don't recall if we presented this to the planning board or not, but this was the initial solar plan we've come up with. Really, to get a further design on this, we need to get into our full construction drawings to make sure none of them conflict with any roof penetrations. But this is kind of initial from working with a solar company, a potential maximization of the solar that could be on the roof. And this is a cross-section. Matt, do you want to talk to this at all?
Sure. This is just showing, I think we actually presented this to the board, just showing how if we are, when we are doing the solar, it will be a ballasted system that lies very low on the roof itself and won't be visible from the street.
And that is it? Thank you very much. I'll hand it back to you.
All right. Thank you. I think at this time, unless the rest of the board feels differently, maybe we should turn it right over to Kathy Rooney to add in a little talking about their process and anything that they wanted to add to the discussion. Does that sound good to the planning board to hear their comments first and then jump in? Okay, great. Kathy, floor is all yours.
Okay, so you, did everybody get a chance to read our comments? That's my first question.
I think so.
We did.
Great.
I mean, you mean the ones we received today, Kathy?
Yes.
Yeah, I think they came into my mailbox at one, and I, I had some time right before this meeting, but not in great detail.
Yeah, I would agree that. I read them, but not in great detail, so.
Okay, so I can go through them if people would like that.
I, I think it's, I think it's really about, you know, hitting maybe the, the major questions and points. Obviously, you had a lot in there, and we don't need to go through every point tonight, some of it's self-explanatory. But if you could definitely describe the overall process, view, most important questions that the Design Review Committee was, was dealing with, I think that's what we would most want to hear.
So I think one of the big ones was we wanted to see the photo montage, so we would have some good ideas about how, what people would see, what the existing people living in the Faford area would see of the new apartment buildings. And we also wanted to see it from the street, and we asked to get those renderings so that they look like they'll look when they first get installed, so that the public is seeing a real picture of what it will look like when it gets installed, as opposed to what it's going to look like 10 years from now. So that was number one. The garage screening, we had a discussion about in terms of that dark gray screening. We actually came up with like a stainless steel product that wouldn't rust. We liked that idea. We liked the buster with the clear sides, and we've asked for a light to be on in that shelter from like 8:00 or 9:00 PM. I'm not actually sure, like, people getting picked up or dropped off if the motto was supposed to stop there, but in the winter, it gets dark at 4:00. And if people are getting picked up from that bus shelter, they should be visible to the bus driver. They shouldn't feel like they're in a dark place, even though it has clear sides. I just think there's, you know, a couple of issues there. We went through the siding and the exterior walls. We were asking for two, two different shades of blue in particular. We asked for the wood, which I think the applicant showed. And the two shades of blue, we felt were more in keeping with the village concept. And then we also, we've asked repeatedly for as many vents as possible to be hidden and architectural features, because they just look awful shown up on buildings. And then we asked for the wood, which I think we've gotten more of added back to the buildings. It adds a warmer look.
And Kathy, just a question, there's just one shade of wood, right? One shade of wood, two shades of blue? Is that right?
That's what I believe we settled on at the last meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just, Kevin, you're agreeing with that?
I, I think Matt and his team is showing two different shades of wood, and I think that's, I think that's in keeping with the idea of the village aesthetic, where each building has both a different blue or green. I'm actually leaning towards the green, but we can talk about that, and a different shade of wood. Is that right, Matt?
That's correct.
All right, Bill, did you have anything to add to that?
No, no, I don't.
Okay. And then we're, we really have been asking about the lighting to be dark sky and shielded and to keep it off of, to create as little glare as possible. So we did have a discussion about doing, making sure that we hit the photometrics so that outside any doors, we had minimal lighting, so at least people would not be in the dark. We like the dog park. We've asked for both the solar, solar, at least the building to be solar-ready, which we were told was going to happen. We've asked for the parking lot to be EV-ready, and I might not necessarily like where they are, but where the applicants agreed to put sleeves on in the, at the edges of the beds that are joined, that are adjacent to the parking lot, so that they'll be EV-ready, and it'll be easy to, to pull more wiring through and set up more stations if the, if there's a demand. We asked for retail signage, the presentation flipped by so fast, we didn't, I didn't actually see it, but I think it got broken up into smaller sizes and the horizontal band to reduce the scale. Do you, either of you guys, Kevin or Bill, have a comment on that?
I don't.
Can you repeat the changing the scale of which component?
The whole, the site, the retail signage, so that it would be further refined, broken up into smaller areas within the horizontal band.
Yeah, that's an aspect of the design guidelines of Ashland to reduce the amount of surface area for signage. And so I think that the architect has taken that approach to, to break it up with vertical striations across the, the length of that signage band.
Okay. We asked, so we seem to have gotten more native plants and flowers. I couldn't see, couldn't see that, that on the presentation, it was my new font.
61%, 61%.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's getting there. It's pretty good. And we appreciate the effort, because originally there were a lot less. And then I was suggesting using eco-grass, because we had a conversation about how, how expensive grass is to maintain, actually, and that's, the seed might be more expensive, but it, it takes a lot less water and fertilizer inputs and things like that. And then we've been asking about the hedge at the back in particular, and having that be like a double, a double hedge to give more screening to the condos.
Would it be possible to put the landscape plan up while you're talking about the landscape?
Sure.
Views in and views out. And then the other thing that we talked about that seemed to be on this was a discussion about the, there's a snow storage facility over at the Stop &amp; Shop on Temple Street in Framingham, where it's actually somewhere between a six and an eight-foot drop down into the ground that has trees around it. But, you know, when there's a lot of snow, you suddenly go drive down the street and see all this snow piled up there. And that's where they put all their snow storage, and it does have trees around it. And so I was asking if instead of a riprap slope, which isn't going to be very beautiful, if some device like that could be fit in there, so there'd be trees behind it for the condos farther back, and there would also be trees for the people who live in these buildings, so it would look, it'd be more screened and look better. And then we were looking for the detailed landscape plan revision, which we haven't seen, but I guess got shown tonight. We were asking information about the snow storage plan and capacity. We saw the rendering of the bus shelter with lighting and side panels. The photometrics got flipped by, so I think they've done that. And then a rendering of the center court revised of the residences.
I think we're talking about the center court, Todd.
Oh, the courtyard?
No, I think that was, that was the view that Todd had up.
I think the center court was a center green in between condos, unless I was mistaken.
All right, is that your, sorry, we're, I was just asking Kathy if that was, if that was her, her list? Have we kind of gone through the basics?
Yes.
Did any other members of the Design Review Committee have comments that Kathy didn't go over already? Or that they wanted to add to?
Yeah, I'll just mention the residential windows above the commercial entrance. I understand from talking with the applicant in our meetings that the planning board had requested some elements that signified the retail portion of. that the planning board had requested some elements that signified the, the retail portion of the project. And I think we, the design review committee likes the fact that that wood, which I guess we'll, we'll see in this rendering, the wood at the retail portion pops up to the second floor, but we felt that it was important to maintain the scale of a residential window. So I think this is, in our, in our take on, this is a, a good mediation between what was shown before and, and what the planning board was, was asking for. So I think as part of this meeting, I'd like to just talk about that with the planning board and get your take on where this has, has gone.
Great, thanks, Kevin. Anything else from the design review committee? Then I'm going to open it up to the planning board for questions, comments. And we can have a, just a general discussion. Note that we will be waiting for anything having to do with the third-party review until everyone's had a chance to review that. That was way too much to go over, so we won't be discussing any of that tonight. One question I did have on that, Peter, is that part of the design, third-party review is snow removal? Or looking at that? Or is that generally in there, something that they would review? Muted. Muted, Peter.
I'm sorry. I have not had time to go through it, so I don't know if they comment with it all.
Okay, okay. All right, then, were there any further comments from the design review committee? All right, then let's open it up to planning board as well. And I think we're probably going to want to have the presentation up, we'll be flipping back and forth through, through that. So, given the size of my screen, I might not be able to see who is kind of wanting to talk, so planning board, feel free to just jump in when you have an opportunity.
Well, I can get started, Tricia, if that's okay.
That'd be great.
So in general, I, I think I am, I'm, I'm very grateful for, for, for the work that the applicant and the design review committee have done. I think they covered a lot of ground. And, and overall, I, I, I personally think that, that there's been a lot of progress in, in all fronts. I think most of the changes that are shown tonight are, are appropriate. One quick question for, for Matt. Was there any change? I mean, I can see it a little bit on these, on these rendering, but we took a little bit of, of the proportions of the, of the glazing or the openness and the retail base of the building. I, I see that, that the, the, the the banding separating the residential from, from the retail, which seems, I, I think looks very appropriate. But was there any change on that?
Marcelo, it's really hard to see, Marcelo, but the, on this front blue building, no, there was no change, because that was a shorter sign band, but one of the things Kevin brought up, that one, the first design review committee was the length of some of them. So the one that's in the building two to the right there is much longer. It's, it's hard to see in this, you can see it better in the image.
You see, you see a little bit of a difference, okay.
Yeah, so we brought, we brought pilasters, for lack of a better term, up to help frame in groups of two of those storefronts.
Okay, I, I think that's a great change. I, I think the proportions look right. All, all in all, the introduction of the vertical siding, and that vertical siding is, is born in Baton?
Born in Baton, yep.
Yeah, okay, good. The, that, that looks good. The, the only thing that, that I, that I would just, and I know that the same review made the recommendations. And ultimately, really, we have to, to trust the designer and the architect to, to make a final call on this. I, I think there is a, there, there is a great benefit on, on, on having some color gradations to, to get the, the village look that, that, that we feel is appropriate for, for for the public to see. There, there is a point in the project, though, where, where, where you can go a little too far. And, and, and I, I just like to caution the, the, everybody to, to think about it. It's good to add different colors. There's a point where, where, where you're just playing too much with it and, and it looks a little busy. I personally think that the, one of the previous renderings, you have another option with this a little less variation, I believe, even with the vertical siding. I personally think that, that, that was a little more calm. I mean, there's a lot of added accents here with the wood. There's, there's siding, there's, there's bands. So I, I would caution not, not to go a little too crazy with just different colors everywhere. It's, it's like when you, when you go to, to a house with someone that, that, that's really an advocate of color and you see that every room has every single wall in the room painted a different color. It, it, it can get, you know, distracting to the eye. And I, I prefer not to go too, too far on this. I think where, where, where we have it, it's appropriate. I think the different volumes and massing on, on, on some of the long sections of these buildings are broken down nicely. There's balconies, there, there's a lot going on. So that would be my only caution, that I, I, I would personally favor something that's a little, a, a little more still, still with variety, but, but, but a little less active. Difficult to, to point where, where is the threshold, right? But it's, it's just a feeling.
So Marcelo, would you be questioning the introduction of the new color, whether it's the darker, whether it's the deeper blue or the green in introduction of two?
Can we see, can we see that? Yeah, let, let's look at that. There, there was a two set of lights that, that shows kind of different, different options, like, like, like say on the, on this, this, this shot that we have here. So if, if, if I start going from, from left to right in the image, I start seeing there's, there's, the, the gables kind of define some markers, right? Those bays. And, and as I seen from the far distance, this one color, this two, now three close into the corner, then I turn around and it goes back again, within the same kind of body, if you will, there's just a kind of, it starts becoming like a patchwork of colors. I think that there, there is a, that, there is a benefit of kind of organizing overall sections of buildings to look like one color and not transition in the middle. Maybe that's what, what I'm trying to get at. If, if you look at, like this view, for example, with the darker color, I personally am not a big fan of, of that transition, because it's it's, 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 it just draws too, too much of contrast, but contrast. But that's, of course, we're talking about color, so that's, it's a very subjective.
May, may I ask you one question? Do, do you prefer the one wood for the entire, for both buildings or two different woods, one on each? I can, I, I can show you kind of an image with, with the two woods. I guess this one shows the two woods. There's a lighter wood on this building and a darker wood on this building.
I don't know, how, how, how to tell. I, I, I think, but that, that, that's where, where I mean, I guess I'm glad you asked that question, you asked the question, because it, it goes to the same point that I was talking about. So different woods, different colors here. There, there's a lot of and, and maybe it's a good thing. I, it, personally, I think if the, the color variation, if the wood accents would be something that kind of holds, like, it's like a belt that holds everything together. Maybe they don't need to be two colors, in my opinion. I, I think that was great, that, that whether the same review suggested to changing the trellis to be wood, that's a lot warmer and, and feels more attractive. And overall, that, that, those are good changes. I'm, I'm not sure that the two colors do a lot for me, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah, you bring up a very good point, because I've, I've been looking at this for the last day or so. Concerned where, I, I like the idea of breaking down colors and your point about going beyond. We don't want to end up with a patchwork quilt where we've got so much going on, you don't know where to look first. And I think if we're going to go with wood, I personally, I think if they had a homogeneous look to the wood, that have the wood accents in various buildings and have the differences being in the colors of the siding, I think would make more sense.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's, that's, in, in my view, the building on the left on this view, it's, it has a really good balance. And, and it's kind of, it, it, you, you get like a complete picture. The longer buildings, they get a little trickier, but, but when it starts changing colors in the middle of, of the rhythm, it, it becomes distracting to me. And, and it kind of reminds me of what, when you go through, of course, there's no comparison here. But there, there's, there's some projects in Framingham that, that have been developed and, and they try to do too much with color as, as, as kind of accentuating things that are not natural to be accentuated, unnatural to the eye, on a village that has been grown, has grown organically. Typically, these things are, 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 the, the changes don't happen like every, every other window or, or that often. There, there are little greater groupings of, of themes. And, and I just, I would caution that, ultimately, I, I think we have great progress and overall, I'm, I'm, I'm really pleased of, of, of the work that, that the center review committee has done. Of course, I, I would just simply caution the, the designers and the proponents to I, I would prefer not to go too, too crazy with changing color at every corner or at every bay.
Thanks, Marcelo. Any other, anyone else from the planning board want to jump in with, with design comments on this?
I can go, but I, I think I would err exactly the same caution that Marcelo just shared. For me, as a designer, a darker wood is a little more contemporary. And I think that's not what we're trying to achieve in this complex. We're trying to kind of connect something that's a little more transitional. So the darker wood that's seen in this image is literally, for me, is fighting this whole view. However hard we try, this is going to be a bunch of buildings, right? So you can't just by changing one side, one color of wood, it's not going to get that impact on that scale. So I personally seem to feel comfortable with the lighter wood versus the darker wood, because it feels like it really works well and talks with the neighborhood than the darker wood. Because it feels, well, once it goes to the darker wood, it feels very contemporary and it feels very out of place, at least for me. And for the colors, I love those blues, but I think this is not the location for those colors. First of all, it's going to get dated very soon. I mean, colors that technically get dated. It feels like having that gray works well with kind of merging with the background and the surroundings versus creating the strong color. I love this rendering. I'll say definitely the dark and the blue look lovely, but I think your earlier images were definitely my preferred option. And the other one is, I understand the logic of the windows changing to a little more residential double hung, but I felt like it lost that impact that it had in the earlier version with the windows that you had shown earlier, but that's just me. It feels like it lost that, something with the proportion or something, but it lost that impact once you changed those windows to a double hung style.
Yeah, I wonder if there's something else that's in between, you know, that, that you can still like, I, I think it's an important point to kind of reveal those spaces to be residential and there's not really a double high, not really a double high commercial space in there. But maybe something else can be done with the trim or something to kind of complete that look. I, I want an agreement of, I think about the one color of wood, like, and I, and I like both in their various contexts. And I, I think as Deepo, you commented, that it looks very commercial when you look at the, that commercial, contemporary. When you look at the blue and that dark wood, and I really like that look. But I think when, when you say, well, look at the greater context of the neighborhood, I'm like, oh yeah, maybe, maybe it's not right for that neighborhood. But, but I like this other, the, the beginning here with the light wood and this other color blue as well. So I thi, I think there still might be an opportunity for like an extra color. I think like Kevin was saying earlier, the green or some, or something else, because it is a big building and, and there might be an opportunity still for that other color. But it sounded like the design review committee had also maybe, unless I'm mistaken, had kind of settled on that, that there should be the one kind of wood. And correct me if I'm wrong, but had assumed one color of wood, but perhaps an additional color of siding, given the scale of the building. And, and I would still be open to it, to exploring that, that additional color. And, but, but obviously, just in a, you know, in a careful way, I'm sure there's a so many alternates of where you could place the color. And some of that might become clearer when we look at these renderings flat on, you know, without the trees and all we're doing is looking at color and, and how it kind of plays out. So, but as, as was said before too, I appreciate the, the work of the design review committee and some of these little things that they picked out that, that actually helped, you know, helped a lot, I think. I also think the the bus station, I don't know if those meetings ever happened with the community about the bus stop, but I, I kind of like it's, it's simplicity, you know, it's simplicity, but not out of a box, which I think is, I think is fitting. And I would assume that even though it, it's, it's that some of the materials here, which are now just, you know, just shown in a schematic version, but say that wood would match the wood, whatever it is on the building. So there's just small ties, you know, in between the two. But I think keeping it simple, you know, ma, makes a lot of sense to me, so.
I agree with that, Tricia. I didn't comment on, on the shelter, but I, I think a lot of the options that, that were shown, they all have their own interest. I think the design review chose this one as their preferred. I, I agree with the simplicity and, and I think it's, it's, it actually connects with, with the project, which is something that we were looking for. I think this works good.
Yeah, so.
That as well. My question is, is would the community, who maintains this bus shelter? I'm just curious, like that plexiglass came about because of the wind situation, but that's also something that can easily crack over time with, if the wind direction is from west, is that what I read earlier? But who maintains that on the long run? I'm guessing that's kind of on standards. I don't know how it's installed, but I'm just curious, who maintains this bus shelter?
My guess is because we're going to become a member of the overall community that has a sort of a facilities committee and various other committees, and we all pay dues into that each month. I assume this will become a ongoing expense for maintenance and upkeep by the overall facility committee.
It, it should be minimal. I mean, once it's built, it's not, there's not really much to maintain here.
I just take, make sure that, that, that plexiglass can really stand that wind pressure that can become challenging over time if it is really that forceful as we are starting to see lately in Ashland.
It would have to be fairly thick, so it's, it can't break either.
Yeah.
And in terms of the light, I think I heard the possibility of having that being a solar light or, or set of lights. I think that's probably a good demonstration also. I, I think running utilities to this seems way overkill.
I agree.
It would be nice, nice to, to show that, you know, you are preparing the building for solar, which I think is appropriate and and this is a little demonstration of it too.
We could do a solar panel on the roof.
Any other questions from the board? Or either board, I should say, committee or board?
I do have a question. So you did say, do we have design questions? And anybody who knows me knows that I'm, I'm not really capable of that. I want for animals for adults, so. I have a, so my, I have one question. I don't know if the board, because I know before I was on the board, there was quite a bit of discussions, but this is in prep for the, the new application and slash reading the third party. What is the overlap between the covenant and the site plan phase three that was approved? And the well wood mixed use overlay district? Because I think we need to, or at least me, understand if that's a puzzle or if they're not at all related when we review the rest of the documents.
So I can take that. So Kathy, I'm happy to help you help with that, but the covenant really, which goes back to two thousand and one, that outlined the entire development of the building in America. This was that small piece. The, the development is staying within that covenant. Going back to what was done in two thousand and three, this project is re-permitting, it, it is almost is a new project being proposed for this phase to fit into that piece of the covenant, has no relationship to what was permitted in two thousand and three.
Okay, so the covenant. Um, okay. So the covenant is, is, um, anything in the covenant is relevant to this project, correct?
Correct. Yep.
And then, um, the site plan that was approved. So that is completely voided. Um, I, I think I read something different in the third party report. So that's why I was trying to get how the pieces of the puzzle put together.
I, like I, like I said earlier, I haven't had a chance to go through everything on the third party before, but I can take a look at it and then get back to you.
Peter, if I just address that?
Yep.
I, I, I agree with you. I, I saw this, the peer review made some comments referring to the conditions in the previous site plan approval. And, and one of our comments will be back was saying, those are conditions of a previous site plan approval. This is a new site plan application. The, the, some of the items are completely irrelevant regarding where they had to drive under fire access. We're not providing any area of a building where a fire trucks have to drive under. So I, I, I agree with you. Some of them are irrelevant, but some of them we meet anyway. So we'll address that in our, in our response letter.
Okay. Then I guess it's also just from our perspective as the planning board at town responsibilities that, um, if that really is just gone away, any of those conditions um, of that site plan.
And really that site plan is not being built, right? It's not being executed. It's not being installed, right? And so site plans are approved, um, the site plan can be approved, right? But after two years, that site plan obviously has a clock on it or a time. So number one, that site plan is around 19 years old. Um, and number two, this is entirely new project.
Um, yeah, I'm just concerned about how that goes with the covenant because I believe they're pretty critically linked. So that's what, um, like the covenant's more older than that and it didn't go away.
Seems like, oh, go ahead. No, Peter, finish your comment.
I, I, I'm happy to take a look, a deeper look into it and, and, and have a conversation with council regarding to get you, to get a, a, a solidified answer.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say, given that, um, most of us, including myself, didn't even take a glance at that third, third party review. Um, so we knew from the start, um, that we didn't receive it in time in order to discuss it. So I think, um, it's a valid question that we should all understand. Um, and that it's, um, should obviously be a part of the discussion when we next meet at this project with, about this project. Um, and includes the discussion of that third party review. So, um, if, if that's, if that's good, give us all a chance to, uh, to read through it. Um, all right. Well, if there's no other questions or comments on this, um, um, I, I guess if, if there's any, um, questions from the public, I will open it up for brief public comments. Um, obviously we'll be discussing this project again, but if there, if people in the public have short comments, um, because we do have another public hearing to get to tonight, um, I will entertain those at this time. Please use the raise hand function.
So Tricia, I could say that we have one hand raised and that is Margie. Uh, Margie, would you please feel free introduce yourself? I might can introduce yourself.
Margie Cassell, Eight Adams Road. I have two questions. Uh, the, um, in the montage rendering that you showed in the center, it looked like there was a very wide wooded area. And in the subsequent rendering, it looked like that was completely replaced with buildings. So I don't know if that's the case, but it causes me to wonder how many trees you plan to remove.
Oh, part of that, part of that open space shows trees across the street as well. And because right now there's a fairly large open parking lot there. There's a fairly large, I mean, basically the site is fairly open on both sections of it. So there will be some trees coming down, but the majority of the, the site is open right now.
Uh, uh, if you want to look at a, a, a Google Earth or Google Images, the one side is a retail development, which is a parking lot, and the other side is basically cleared already. As, as kind of a, a barren land landscape there. Um, so it, it, the trees that you see in the distance, really on the other side of Chestnut Street.
So you don't know how many trees you're actually going to need to remove?
I don't know.
I do know, I, I do know we'll be planting a lot more than we are removing.
Okay. That leads to my second question. It's great that you increase the amount of native plants that you're going to put in. But I'm wondering, is there a reason why you can't do more? And I ask this because research has shown that you need a minimum of 70% in order to support songbirds and the insects that they need to feed their chicks.
Tom Minor, do you want to answer that question? Yeah, that was, um, that's something we'll be looking at as we, uh, go further in the design is, uh, we'll zoom in on, uh, each, each area and if we can change some out, we will.
Tom, let me jump in with a question. Is there any reason, um, as a landscape architect, that you use non-native species? What were the, what would be the reasons for choosing non-native species over native species?
Um, it's typically, the native species are, are more of a, uh, I guess you say you get more bang for your buck. There's more four season interest. The, we have better control over the, the ultimate growing size and the sun and, and moisture conditions. Um, as I, uh, it's mentioned in the design review committee, when we first did our initial pass through, we didn't have as many natives because we had some really shade tall, uh, really dense shade areas. And it's, it's really difficult to, to get, um, appropriate shrubs in those areas that don't overgrow the, the windows and, and the walks and everything. So it's a fine tuning process as we, we, as we move on. Um, there's just some, some non-native species that, uh, just are more appropriate. I, I know it doesn't. Um, they're more appropriate as far as the, the conditions and the, the, uh, the aesthetics that we're trying to achieve. Um, that being said, we will take a look at seeing if we can increase the percentage of natives. Yeah.
Yeah. I, I just think kind of in education as, um, as, uh, Ashland moves toward, um, a, a more and more green community. And so it's a little bit of an education for all of us, like how are those decisions made? I'm an architect. I am not a landscape architect, um, at all, and have very little knowledge of that. So, um, having, understanding that decision-making process and what the pros and cons are of each thing would be a, a great knowledge for Ashland as we move forward about what we're willing to sacrifice and what we aren't. So, um, I'd appreciate that. Um, are there any, uh, any, do you have anything else, Margie? Okay. Are there any other, um, questions from the public? All right then, at least on my screen, seeing none. Um, Peter, where are we going from here on this one? I think our next meeting is July 14th. Is that right?
July 14th. Correct. That is correct. I think at this point, uh, I think, um, having a continuance to July 14th makes the most sense. Obviously that gives time to, um, based on development to apply to the, uh, GCG civil engineering comics. And then obviously, um, we do the comments from our design review committee and then submit, uh, any new additional information.
Yes, we'll definitely get back to you on both.
Okay. Great. I, um, I know we're, we're going to be continuing with the design review committee for the, for the next project. But I do want to take a minute to thank them for their input on this project, um, before we move on to the next one. Um, oh, Kathy, you had one?
I have one question, um, that presentation that was made today, is that going to get sent to all of us?
Yes, we'll send that out tomorrow.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Then on, uh, that note, I will make a motion to, to continue, um, 100 Chestnut, the 100 Chestnut Street Public Hearing, um, to July 14th.
I'll second it.
And a roll call vote?
Deepo, I think it's aye.
Anna Tesmanitsky, aye.
Marcelo, I think it's aye.
Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So that is continued until July 14th. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a great night.
All right. Next on my agenda is 225 Pond Street. Peter, just want to let us know where that stands before we continue that project.
Um, since we last spoke of this project, we did get our comments back from, uh, excuse me, comments from, uh, GCG consulting. And so, um, the applicant, uh, they have not, uh, they are still going through the process of communicating with McDonald's, the operator. Uh, and so they have not made any, uh, they have not submitted any changes to the plans as of date. So they have requested a continuance and I will read this into the record, uh, uh, regarding McDonald's 225 Pond Street Planning Board Continuance Request is received by, uh, me on January, excuse me, June 21st, 2021. And it reads from Daniel Allen, who is the project admin. Hi Peter, as discussed, we would like to respectfully request that McDonald's project be continued at the, uh, excuse me, 623 meeting to the next available planning board hearing to allow additional time, further review of the planning board peer review comments and potential site changes. Thanks Dan. This requested continuance is filed with the Ashland Town Clerk on June 21st. Uh, I think it's appropriate to make a continuance out until the next planning board meeting, which is going to be on July 14th.
Any questions from the board? All right. I will make a motion to continue the 225 Pond Street Public Hearing until July 14th. Lots of seconds. Um, and a roll call vote?
Bye. Good day. Anna Tesmanitsky, aye.
Marcelo, I think it's aye.
Councilman Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So that is continued to the 14th. All right. Next on our agenda, we will be continuing, continuing the 501 Pond Street, um, Public Hearing, um, as we had mentioned before, Anna Tes- Tesmanitsky on the planning board is a director butter. So she is going to be stepping out for this part of the meeting and we will text her when it's time to come back. Um, thanks, Anna.
No problem.
And in her place, we'll be stepping in associate member Kevin McLean. So, uh, Peter, back to you. Update on 501 Pond Street.
So 501 Pond Street, uh, tonight being represented by Mr. Ben Stevens and Matt Stevens, representative of Trash Development, uh, similar to just project before, uh, 501 Pond Street has met with the design review committee. Uh, the design review committee has issued comments, uh, on this project. Additionally, uh, we have had third party review, um, and they have sent comments over to us. Um, those comments were sent out to the planning board and also to the applicant, and they were not received until Wednesday this week. Um, so additionally, so, uh, as similar to 100 Chestnut, um, the, the civil engineer, the civil, the civil report is still, is still under review. Um, I can tell you that Trash Development, they did submit a new, uh, landscaping plan, which was sent out to, uh, the planning board this past Friday. And there was some, I believe, some renderings, um, some additional renderings. I do want to make one note that, uh, the planning board did receive an email concerning this application, uh, from Margie Greshel on, uh, excuse me, June 9th, 2022. Uh, and it, uh, proposed, um, and is concerning the proposal of synthetic turf, uh, at 501 Pond Street. So for, for the record, the planning board did receive one email from the public, uh, regarding this project. And that's the update that I have to give to everyone.
Do we have, um, uh, new renderings or new slides to, uh, look at on this? Um,
Oh, if I could, Madam Chair, we have, uh, uh, just a quick update. We had a couple of very productive meetings. Um, and there are some, I would say minor, um, architectural items, which I think we've settled out for the most part. And I'll, I'll turn this over to Matt shortly, uh, mostly doing with sort of the tower roof line, um, and some of the, uh, the retail facade. Um, and I think we're very, very close on that. So, uh, I'm prepared to kind of turn it over to him. Um, and then I'm not sure if I have a, a Koppel Wolf representative tonight. Um, but I can speak to the landscaping plan after that if, 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 if they're not available. So.
Okay. Well, we'll plan to go through the same process. We'll have the presentation. Um, and then let the design review committee weigh in and then, um, and then the planning board can, can jump in after we have all the information. So, um, it's going to Matt.
Thank you for the record. Matt, we're on Icon Architecture. Um, going to be presenting 501 Pond Street. Everyone knows where it is. Um, some of the, Ben, I'll let you get into more detail with some of the, the bigger changes that we first made. Um, was we looked at the arbor element, um, some better screening on the backside along where there was a, uh, semi kind of connection to our property. Uh, we've also made some adjustments to the dog park area, um, where we're no longer synthetic anything. We're doing wood chips. Um, and there's some other tweaks to some of the lighting that we've gone around. Um, so, uh, the, I think the big design, uh, questions that we were asked to kind of present to the design review committee was in reference to the tower elements, some of the retail bases, um, and what's happening along the Woonerf. Um, so this is what you guys had previously seen, uh, with a three-story tower. Um, and then we presented kind of some alternates of the tower that we had looked at. Um, some lower pitches, higher pitches, matching some of the other pitches on the roofs. Um, what happens if you introduce a clear story? I think, uh, we got some good feedback from the design review committee saying that, you know, okay, well, what else is there? What else can you do to this side? What, what about turning the gable? Um, what are the other options? Uh, so we explored three different options. Uh, option one was just doing simply a, a mirror copy of what's happening at the residential entry of the gable end out towards the, the Pond Street. Uh, we felt like this was a little bit flat, uh, missing the mark, didn't quite have, uh, the, um, gateway entry marker, um, that we were hoping for. Uh, option two says, okay, turn the gable. Look at what happens if we reduce the height of the tower and it's, uh, it's something in line with three stories that might make a little bit much more sense, uh, scale wise, uh, but still marks the corner and marks the entry to the site. And then we also presented our, what was, uh, at the time, our preferred option, um, which has the clear store tower element, uh, without turning the gable. Uh, I think after we presented it, uh, the design review committee unanimously felt like the option two with the three-story tower, uh, was their preferred option, um, and in more in keeping with the scale of what's around us. Moving into the Woonerf area, uh, we had talked a bit about kind of the projections at the retail entrances, uh, the amount of glazing and some more fine fenestration along the retail. Um, oops, sorry. Um, so we did look at, uh, actually, I'm going to go forward. We also, they also requested, uh, us to, uh, take a photograph and overlay the perspective similar to 100 Chestnut Street from this angle to kind of show, uh, the, uh, our neighbors and the, uh, Pond Street in its entirety. Um, so that was a picture before, so we overlaid it. Um, and I think, uh, Bill's point there are, and, and Kevin's point, the, our previous image kind of was not doing even justice to how our project was sitting into the site. Made it feel like there was a football field between us, um, and it just, it didn't feel quite right. So we've done that. I think it turned out pretty well. I think you can definitely see, uh, we did a little bit of cleaning up on some of the street here and and everything's under construction currently. So it'll be nice to see this all done. Um, moving into the Woonerf area, uh, I don't think anyone was quite satisfied with how the retail base was turning out. This is where we previously were. Um, this is where we landed, uh, with the design review committee, allowing the brick to continue through continuously along the base, um, keeping just simple. Uh, canopies at the retail entries, bringing anything else out into the Woonerf was just getting cluttered, um, and, and, and taking away uh, from the cleanliness and simplicity of the elevation. Uh, we also added the canopies wherever it made sense for, uh, the retail positions and increased the glazing at key entrance entry points. And we also, it's hard to see here, but this was, uh, double, uh, before. Now we've in, in, increased the glazing, uh, significantly on, on that building there. And that concludes the changes architecturally that we discussed. Um, Ben, I'm happy to bring up the, uh, PDF of Ian's plans if you want me to, so you can.
That'd be great. Yes.
Yeah, just give me one second. Yeah, just give me one second.
Thank you, Matt. Essentially, what we had Ian do, do, and he did a great job, was bring the plan forward. I'm not sure his percentage on native species, but I think he's over eighty percent on the native species count. He's up to about twenty-four hundred plants. So we presented this plan. A previous version was presented at the last meeting, and Design Review had some, we talked extensively a little about the dog park. I looked at some other examples. There's a new one in Natick. And they did sort of a playground-type chip. We felt that was a better solution. I think Design Review had the same opinion that that would be than some sort of fake or plastic grass up in that location. We don't think it's an area that can sustain grass because it's a little small, so it would probably be more torn up if we tried to get grass to grow there, considering it's not that big. We did add a tree. It's going to have to be substantial, you know, maybe four or five-inch caliper. So it sort of survives the activity out there. But we sort of worked on that area a little bit. We took a very hard look at the south, I guess it would be the southwest corner, which abuts the neighborhood to the back. We located, there's an extremely large, probably twelve to eighteen inch, probably an eighteen-inch oak tree that happens to be right in line with the existing arborvitae line. So we really tried to nail down how many arborvitae and what size those would be, so they would look somewhat appropriate to the line that exists. So I think Ian has them planned out at twenty to twenty-five feet tall, and we will put them on an elevated berm like the other hedge, so they'll be about six or seven feet off the ground to start. We also kind of dove into this snow storage issue a little bit. And we had a tree in that area, but per some suggestions on Design Review on how to maintain those trees, we are pulling the new trees sort of back out of the way a little bit and doing a perennial-type planting area. So something that can handle the snow in the wintertime. We did do a calculation. We're up to about, we have about eight thousand cubic feet of storage. It's hard to figure out how that would translate. I feel very confident that we're more than comfortable up to a six-inch storm on storage onsite, and if we need to truck out after that point, we certainly can, can handle that. Some other Design Review comments involve the front handscape area, sort of the trying to eliminate grass wherever possible. So we took that northeast corner of the Woonerf and are turning it into more of a a lowbush blueberry area, sort of a fully vegetated area. Wasn't really integral in the seating area or the patio area, so it seemed an appropriate way to kind of balance the grass in the middle and also sort of knock down the need for chemicals and irrigation and so on and so forth. Design did ask me to explore a potential rain garden, especially in that area, and I did mention that to my civil engineer, and he thinks there are, there's an opportunity especially for the runoff on the front of the property, the lawn area, the patio areas, to put it into sort of a depressed area where those lowbush blueberries are and have that sort of as a, if nothing else, a an example of a rain garden, a functioning, working, clean rain garden. And potentially getting some of the water from the Woonerf just gets a little challenging on when you're plowing snow and you're trapping water. Having the runoff from the lawns and the patios is a lot easier to sort of direct down to that location. And as for the previous project, we did our lighting overlay. And Design Review asked us to take a little look on some of our light spillage. Now, we have pavement on either side of us. We have parking lots on either side of us. We did, Ian did readjust some of the streetlights. And they'll be back. They'll have the back hoods on them, so they won't spill out. There's a little bit of spillage into the parking area on the right, but it won't, it won't go any more than fifteen or twenty feet, and it's a very low level. Same thing on the left. That's once again, that's a parking lot area. I'm not sure what they have for lighting, and I'm not sure what Valley Farm has for lighting. But we wanted to make sure we had no spillage to the neighbors on the west side of the property, which we don't. So that is essentially, that is the big-ticket items we talked about with Design Review, and if there's any questions, take it from there.
Great, thank you. Kathy, do you want to talk about this one?
Um, yeah.
And would you prefer the slides to be up while you do that?
Well, it's always helpful. Okay. So I'm glad the photo montage got supplied. That was something we really wanted to see, and that was awesome to see it. I think we've been getting improvements to the front of the building on the facade about all the things the applicant mentioned, so I think it's much more improved. He did neglect to mention that we had talked about adding additional native vines to that pergola and also a non-native one at my request because it will flower right about now, actually, which is the hydrangea vine, and it will look great in the winter. The bark of that will be growing up the pergola. If anybody's seen Post Office Square in downtown Boston, that's one of the plants growing on their pergola, and it's absolutely spectacular. Okay, so we definitely unanimously liked this particular, the, the option two that was, that we were shown. We didn't like the all-residential look. We didn't like the, the tower going all the way up was, we just felt was too imposing. We like the Woonerf concept. The more refinements we've seen Woonerf concept, the better we like it. I think I'm going to ask for some more information about the runoff in the Woonerf and where it's going, what it's going into, because I was actually trying to get runoff collected in a lot of different places on site, not just in the Woonerf area. So I did some research, and the Mass Stormwater Manual, chapter, volume two, chapter two, has a whole bunch of options for stormwater that are considered best management practice in the state of Massachusetts. So you not only have to have, you not only, you can do a variety of options, not just the the heavily engineered-built chambers below the surface, but you can do simpler things like pressing sections of hardscaping, putting, installing plants and trees in them, and they will clean and filter your stormwater for you. For instance, and it gives a whole bunch of tables in there that tells you how to do the calculations, so you know what TSS is that you're removing. That's total suspended solid, sorry.
We're just making a note then that a concern of the Design Review Committee was stormwater runoff. And so that should go to the landscape architect and the civil engineer about looking at best practices about how to deal with that runoff. Is that fair?
Yeah, it's in our report, actually. First item under parking lot. So we've asked, I'm not sure it will fit in for a double row of trees on the Valley Farm side of the project, just because it's going to appear to be like a row of soldiers, the single trees. And if you had them double spaced, it would, it would just look a lot better, but I'm not sure they're going to be able to fit that in along with the wall, so. We seem to have had a discussion about that. There's a, we had many discussions about the lighting, where the light poles are located, and we're very concerned about shielding Valley Farm and also the glare going into the apartments in this project, so we've asked for ballers to be introduced in areas that are not achieving one-foot candles along the pedestrian pass. I'm sure there's a light above each egress store. And we're, we really don't want any light bleeding into Valley Farm at all. And at one point, we were also asking about providing mini ballers for additional Woonerf lighting. And then the aforementioned stormwater manual, we've also asked, so similar to what they were doing over at one hundred Chestnut, we were asking the applicant if they could make their parking lot EV-ready. And they seem to think they can't, because they seem to think they'll have to move it again, but one hundred Chestnut was pretty sure they could put conduit into the very edge of their plantings along the parking lot and install, you know, I refer to them as sprinkler boxes because that's what we use in my business, but you know, be some kind of box in the ground that would eventually have EV stations at it, and either you'll need them there, either you'll need them or you won't, but at least the infrastructure will be run under the pavement, because you know, I think we're sort of under the impression that if it doesn't get run now, it'll be really hard to ask a building owner to rip up the blacktop and install it, and their answer probably is that they're not going to do it. Okay. We did ask for calculations on the snow storage area, so we got one. We were sort of asking what the, what each area was and then what it would look like together. What the total was. And then we did get a change from fake turf to to wood chips in that dog park. So I think those are big comments. And anybody else in my committee should jump in with comments.
Anyone else on, go ahead, Kevin.
I'll jump in. I'll start off by saying that I do really appreciate the photo montage that was done for this project. I think it really helps us understand the scale of the building. And in seeing that, I think it's scaled well to the streetscape and especially the Valley Farm neighbor. My second point is, we questioned the fourth floor massing in our meetings. If you can pull up the rendering that shows the tower in the foreground, please. And I just wanted to bring to the attention of the planning board that we, we asked if maybe a mansard roof of a very low slope that wouldn't impact the square footage of the floor plate could be introduced, and the applicant knew that that had been discussed in one of the prior planning board meetings. And so I wanted to ask at this time, what was the resolve that came out of that discussion? Asking the planning board that question.
I would have to go back and look at the, look at the earlier renderings to see, I, I don't recall, you know, what, in the various options we went through. Gable versus mansard, were you talking, where were you looking at putting the mansard between the gables?
No, so at these locations that I'm highlighting here.
Okay.
It just appears currently that that center portion of the building is quite large, and the gable portion of the building, the gable portions of the building seem to be in scale with the streetscape. But those center portions in the building appear to be quite imposing, and there might be a strategy to try to reduce that scale. But I, I didn't want to push that subject if that had been discussed and was dismissed for a certain reason.
Well, I, I would say it might have crossed the conversation. I don't recall exactly like Tricia says. We have to go way back, but I, I would just question the, the, the tool of what a mansard really is. I mean, and the origins of the mansard, it's a more urban development based on space and and density. I, I truly don't, don't see how changing the geometry or the presentation of one small portion of a building that extends all the way to the back really is going to make a big difference, myself. I, I think that the changing color of the siding, it's, it's, it lowered the scale, and there's a banding there that kind of naturally separates the, the pieces. I, I think that, can we look at the, the view from the other side that you see that closer to that central portion, the the other corner? This, yeah, I guess this one is, this one is good. I, I think the, personally, I, I, I really don't, don't have an objection of, of, of the roof as presented, because what, the problem with mansards, in, in my view, and you see it in a lot of other projects, they're, they're they're so exaggerated in terms of on slope that they look just like a like an unnatural attempt to create a gimmick. I, I think this proportion is, is, it feels natural to me. It feels like a, like a little villagey, and and I personally don't think changing the roof injustice portion of the building would be, would be that meaningful, if, if you know what I mean. I, I think that and in this one, I think consistency is, it would be more important.
Okay. I, I hate to use the term mansard, but in the Design Review meetings, we were discussing that, you know, maybe this fourth floor is, is a, is a flat wall, so maybe it's not a mansard, but it's just a change of material that might be more similar to the coloration of the roof, where it might be a metal panel, something like that, so that it appears to be a darker color, like I said, like the roof. But if there's no consensus for that, then then that's, that's.
You know, on, 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 on the color side, just the way you just mentioned it, there was discussion, and there was, I think, a rendering presented with, with, with a color that was more darker, more in, in, in general theme, and, and there was definitely a preference to lighten it up just precisely to reduce the scale of the pedestrian scale of it and make the, the fourth floor something that's a little far beyond. But I think that's the reason why the architect developed some of these bays, also starting only at the third floor, just to, to, to create a datum there that is more related to the Woonerf, which is really where people are going to be walking. So I, at that conversation, I did remember that.
Okay, so I, I want to trust the, the architect and their design decisions and what has come before, and I don't want to create this cyclical loop of of discussion, so. Okay, I'm going to move on to my second point, or third point, rather. We did indeed discuss the retail canopies and the brick cladding of the commercial ground floor. And I think what is being presented in these new renderings is appropriate and is what we were expecting to come out of the conversation, so those are looking good to me anyway. And I think we already touched on this, but we do have the expectation that the lighting will be cut off from the adjacent neighborhood and properties, and it looks like the photometrics that have been presented in this meeting reflect that. And I'll just second what Kathy had said about the dog park that we had discussed, providing mulch, or having the applicant provide mulch in that area as opposed to fake turf or real turf, for that matter. And those are, those are my comments.
Thanks, Kevin. Anyone else from the Design Review Committee?
Yes.
Yeah, Bill.
I, I'd just like to say to Trask, I appreciate what you've done. I think you're really trying. And I think you're really trying to cooperate with this project. I would love it to be as unobtrusive as your Ashland Woods project. I'd love it to be as attractive as your twenty-one Main Street project. In, in that vein, I think, I'll go back to my original comment. I think it's a story too tall. That may be a moot point at this. Um, that may be a moot point at this juncture, but that's how I'm looking at it. It's, it's not quite looming, but it's kind of large. Um, to mitigate that, perhaps maybe larger caliper trees in the woofer area, which I really like. Um, you know, the whole concept of that is um, it's, it's a melding um, option, which I appreciate. Um, so basically try to hide it, hide it better. Um, not with smaller trees, uh, with larger plantings, if you would be so kind to, you know, from, make it look like part of the landscape from the start. Um, and in that vein, I feel badly for the people in the condos behind because it's going to be looking, it's, it will be looking over into their properties. So that's what I have to say.
All right. Thanks, Bill. Anyone else, anyone from the planning board want to come in at this point? While, while we're on this slide, I'm, I'm just going to jump in and talk a little bit about Kevin's um, comments on that roof where Marcelo also jumped in as well. And I can see, um, I think for me that while, while I agree that mansard, I, I don't think for me would fit here, but I do see on the um, say on the, the end conditions of the building where the larger gables are, that dormer and dormer slope seems to be a lot more in scale and makes sense than it does kind of the stretched out between the two buildings. And um, and so maybe that does feel a little um, you know, still a little unresolved. I'm not sure. Um, I, I don't know what the answer is, but I can see that looking for another solution between those, between those two buildings. Um, so you know, that might just be something that, that we look, that you look at again, that the architect takes another look at again. Is there another way to what essentially becomes a very long um, shed dormer? If there's a way, as we've talked about in other projects, to break up that roof a little bit, a little bit more. And we've been talking about the woofer for so long, I can't remember what, what we saw before in this area. Frankly, I'd have to go back and, and look at more slides to see where, where we got here. Um, and then how we arrived at this point. But I also understand, you know, what, what Kevin is focusing on, I, I think in, in that area. So I appreciate that as well. Um, so I would say that band between the two gabled sections, the roof line, how, how the building meets the sky. Are there, is, is there, is there something else we need to look at there? Um, otherwise I think a, a lot of the comments were um, you know, I appreciated the little changes um, in it. I'm not sure about the landscaping questions. I think we'll have to be addressed as, as we go along. I'm not sure about the the vines over the trellis. I guess, I think there's probably pluses and minuses to that. Um, the first minus is I, the first minus that jumps out to me is a mess. Does it create a, a mess underneath that, underneath that trellis? For um, activities that might happen there or, or no?
No, that's what, that's what groundskeepers are for and they have staff on site that will keep the place cleaned up. That's what we've been told. I mean, you know, in the fall and the leaves fall, yeah, there's going to be leaves, but if you, if you haven't seen the garage at Post Office Square downtown Boston, I would seriously urge you to go take a look. It's the best looking garage you'll ever see.
I have been there many moons ago and I can't quite uh, remember what the trellis looks like. Um,
May not have been, um, it may have not have been as grown in then. And I had seen it because I used to live within a couple of miles of Post Office Square and I had a post office box there, so I'd walk in. And um, I remember when it was a total construction site. And then when they put, put the stuff in originally, it was just a spare pergola. But once it started growing in, it was like, wow. And on a hot day, it's, it's packed with people sitting on those benches because it's nice and shady and cool. It just feels good to be out there, you know, get your fresh air from your office building before you have to run back in and sit in a cubicle for the next few hours.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's definitely worth looking at as an example and seeing is uh, is, is this area of this pergola in the same kind of sun that that is in? Is it shaded by the other trees or by the building itself? Is it the same circumstance? Um, and thus creating the same environment or the same need? Um, but, but yeah, I'll have to Google it frankly and, and remember what that trellis is like because I, I can't recall.
Yeah, and I think they've got plenty of light for what we talked about in there. Um, probably three or four of them were native vines and the hydrangea actually prefers, you know, it'll tolerate full sun for a few hours, but it likes to have a little bit of shade too, so that it'd be, it'd be a nice mix of plant material. And a nice, a nice, because it's right there at the entrance, so it'll be very colorful as people pull in.
You know, I, I would say it's well worth having um, the landscape architect take a look at it and investigate it as a possibility and and hear uh, hear his opinion on it. So, um, uh, are there other questions from, from design review committee, but really from the board at this point?
I, I do have one, one comment and, and I, I think this probably one of the most difficult, you know, this, the design exercises that, that, that they underwent, which is the, the corner tower.
The tower, right. Yep.
Uh, because it, it used to be, if we could see the comparison from, so this is what we had before and um, and, and that I see as a, as a, as a marker, this is uh, so, so I, I can totally understand the, the, the challenge of how to make this work. Uh, and I think the, what we don't see on these, on, on this rendering, but Matt, you can probably address this. Uh, you, you know, this um, this slope roof that is, 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 the roof is ending, yeah, right there. This, this is like a weird join of roofs, isn't it? I mean, that, that just going back right, right to a, to a flat roof. Uh, maintaining the same datum, uh, there's going to be a, a, a kind of a weird break. I, I guess you don't see it that much, but it seems a little unnatural joint that gets created, but uh, what, what, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I, I was concerned about that as well, Marcelo. And I think the intent that we were trying to mimic is the, the, the edge of the roof line is a continuous datum. Um, yeah, and, and we can handle the drainage. I'm not concerned about the drainage. That can easily be uh, you know, a little cricket in there that pitches to a gutter, which we'll obviously have to have along this face here. Um, uh, but I think as long as we maintain the penetration of the cornice is the same as the, the edge of the roof, the roof edge. I think it can work nicely. Uh, I think that was my biggest struggle with this option was how do you make that interaction work well?
Uh, uh, and do, do you feel, I mean, one, one of the things that obviously reducing the, the height of this element is that you, you wanted a marker for, for, for your corner. Do you still feel that this is a marker?
Yeah, I still feel this is, this is getting to um, where we wanted without being overly exuberant, which maybe we were before.
Okay. Yeah, it, it definitely, obviously it, it, it's a little less um, 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 imposing, which I guess that's what what you guys on the design review committee were, were looking for. So if you guys are all um, um, satisfied with, with the result, I think um, um, I think that's fine.
I have a comment. This is sort of tagging along Bill's comments, so there, we're not compliant on the parking. And to be compliant on the parking, we could have less units. And I don't know what that looks like, but I believe the board should at least ask what that would look like.
I think we, we went through that exercise at one point. Um, and the answer was basically taking off units at the back of the building. Am I right?
Yep, you're right, Tricia. We, we explored what that would mean. Um, um, Ben, please fill in where I'm missing the gaps, but I think uh, if, and also if we were to reduce the unit count, we, we'd also need to reduce the percentage of affordable units that we were proposing and develop. Uh, the woofer, I think, I believe, I believe got smaller. I can't, there was um, to, to compensate for the parking, so I believe we had to make a double row in the back and bring the building forward a little bit more. Uh, but yeah, we did. And I, in the consensus, my understanding was at the end of that, um, that this, we weren't afraid of the density. Um, and we were moving forward with the 120 unit scheme.
Yeah, I don't think the um, that I've seen the, the board meetings that there was agreement on smaller parking. So I think that is still an issue.
We, we have not really discussed the, the, the smaller parking to any great extent. I believe, I believe um, Kevin McLean had, had brought it up in previous meetings and we're kind of waiting for the third party review to have that information in front of us as well.
And, and I think Tricia, that, that, that now there's, there, there's an exchange with the, with the peer reviewer because they did brought that up. I mean, I glanced and, and I'm sure we'll have to get into a little deeper. And I think uh, Trask provided uh, a response, but there, there's I, I believe this, that that's one of the points that they, that they, that they considered unresolved.
If, if I could jump in, um, there's been some discussion on the parking. We did see that in the peer review. Um, and we, as we mentioned, we're going to be going back into sort of another civil analysis. Um, and if needed, we can, we can go back to the nine by eighteen size space. Um, which, as you may know, the only, there's only one definition of parking space for Ashland. There's no, there's no alternate size. So you're spacing, you're, the, the definition of a parking space is nine by twenty. Um, that's not something we can achieve. But under the same breath, Town Hall is nine by eighteen. Your high school is nine by eighteen. The project next door, which was approved by the planning board under a special permit under the Pond Street zoning is nine by eighteen. So we're feeling that nine by eighteen, if not the definition of parking, is certainly is the understanding of recent projects and parking. Um, which we can achieve. We think it makes sense to have some eight and a half size spaces just for asphalt, but even if they have to be nine, we'll just have to increase our asphalt. Um, and we still will have the required parking.
So I think um, again, I haven't had a chance to review the third party um, document and I think that should be definitely, obviously is going to be coming back. We always intended it to come back when um, when we have that kind of review and that kind of factual information in, in front of us. Um, so I think in, in talking about the density and the units, this did go back and forth a little bit with the planning board early on. And what, and I, I encourage other members of the planning board to jump in um, with, with this process. But what we were looking for at the time, what was being asked for at the time really was open space. You know, how do we give open space back to this community? We can't, one project can't um, give everything, right? Nor I don't think was um, the Pond Street overlay district or every district, any district in, in Ashland intended to give everything on the list. So we decided to focus on open space and providing an open space um, along Pond Street, which is where the woofer concept um, came in. It started much smaller and grew to, to this concept. Um, so, and the other part of that was looking at the affordable housing. So um, in the position Ashland's in, you know, that is certainly not the only consideration at all. But it is a consideration. And so we are looking to balance out various needs of, of Pond Street, of Ashland as a whole, of housing, of commercial, and there's many, obviously many, many factors that need to be weighed one against each other. So that was, that was my memory of it. Um, that um, we were looking at all these factors and we started really focusing on open space and how we can provide not a, not a whole forest, but a public space where people could gather similar to the corner spot at times. So um, I think that's, that's kind of where we got, that's kind of in my memory where we landed where we are. Anyone else can feel free to, feel free to jump in on that.
I think that's a good summary. Uh, Tricia, there, there was, I believe in this conversation, that's where uh, we also requested different options for the building configuration. And I think there were like four options that, of, of massing that were evaluated. Um, and they were, I guess the considerations you just listed were part of those options.
You know, a couple of those things will be um, more when you get into third party report, but interestingly, I don't think it mentioned sewer, I'm pretty sure. And I know that we've had discussions, apparently there is something that needs to be done with sewer and I, I know that doesn't have to be tonight, but I'd hate to just, everybody thinking they're getting close and then there's this other issue. So I, I know the sewer is at least one of them.
I think the sewer has been on the thing for a while. Peter, do you have um, information on that? I know it's come up at various times.
Sewer has come up from day one, I would say on this one. Uh, what comes down to it is the fabric company who's the owner of this property. Um, they uh, they need to put, well, they, the fabric company needs to put a twenty foot uh, twenty foot section of pipe in, which will connect the Colony Road to the Brogdon Road, excuse me, the Colony Road pump station to the Brogdon Road pump station uh, by gravity. Uh, and so because right now this area of town is picked up by the Colony, uh, it's called the Ledgemere Pump Station. Um, therefore it goes from Ledgemere to Chestnut Street, Chestnut Street, therefore it's pumped over framing. So if a section of pipe that is missing is implemented and the owner has, has full knowledge of, I mean, excuse me, the owner has full knowledge of the situation and, and the developer here, Trask Development, has full aware, uh, is aware of the situation. Uh, as part of this development, that pipe, that piece of pipe gets plugged in and then therefore the town of Ashland can send by a gravity flow from the Ledgemere Station to the Bracket Road, excuse me, the Bracket Road. Um, not Brogdon, the Bracket Road Pump Station and then on into framing here. Um, this situation helps the town of Ashland a great deal. Um, as our pump stations are um, you know, or, or at a, or, 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 or at a, at a high level right now. Do you have any questions? Did I explain that well enough or any question? No?
I, I guess I didn't see it in the third party review that we just received here, but is, will they be reviewing the capacities coming out of this building and, and that sort of thing? I'm not sure. I can't see where it ties in coming out of this building.
So for sewer, uh, and all sewer work, um, the town of Ashland uses Haleyian Ward uh, as a third party controller. And, and, and so that is Haleyian Ward where GPW and myself uh, will be reviewing this project uh, and how it moves through that process. Um, and, and what, what needs to be done, I would say. But I think at this point, I, I'm confident to say that the developer, uh, Matt Ben Stevens has had conversations with GPW, have had conversations with um, our representatives from Haleyian Ward about what the situation is regarding subject and capacity, excuse me, sewer and capacity at this point. Um, obviously this is the end of the lines, the, the, the last piece of property, um, of flooding halls. And so uh, sewer is available, however, there are few hurdles that need to be uh, uh, overcome.
So is that something we, you can make sure the planning board um, is kept aware of, of um, about those reviews, that discussion, and so we know what the final result is on that and how it may, okay? Does that cover your question, at least for now? Kate, I don't think we have all the information, but it's in process at least. Okay. Um, I just wanted to go back to this slide because I think we um, that the tower, I also wanted to comment um, as well that I, I actually, I like this reduced tower, that the um, we did talk about that tower of the corner as it was a different condition um, in, than the other side, in, in that it kind of marks the, the beginning of Ashland in a way, not in a dramatic way, certainly. Um, but that the two sides of the site are thus different. And um, um, and so I liked that end being weighted with some kind of special element and the pergola and it's kind of the beginning to the woofer in a way. And so, but um, I, until I saw this shorter version, it, it didn't occur to me that it could be smaller. The other one seemed to provide a roof that was always just kind of in the way, I think, um, of uh, of the building. And so I do, I do like this um, scaled down version better, a little simpler, a little like has been said, a little less imposing. And so I do I do like this um scaled down version better, a little simpler, a little like has been said, a little less imposing. So. Right, any other questions from design review or from the board? Otherwise, I will open it up to any public comment that may be out there.
Tricia.
Oops, sorry. Uh Marcel, were you jumping into just to keep track?
No, I think Deepa is.
Okay, Deepa.
It looks like somebody else, Kevin was, Kevin, go ahead.
Just um for design review, I noticed that in your memo that you guys had maybe talked about the um commercial versus residential mix. And I I just wondered if there was any more info on how that conversation went. If you know, you mentioned whether there would be a need for more commercial and and that designer views feelings is maybe it should be more commercial than than the mix we have. So just wondered if we could get an update on how that conversation went.
Well, I think we had that a couple of meetings ago. And I think that, you know, we would like more commercial if it was possible in there. Um because I think I think we feel that's more in keeping with the character of um the various and sundry agreements about what we're doing, what we're supposed to be doing along this commercial corridor in Ashland. Um I know I certainly never envisioned apartments or condos going into this area at all originally. Um I didn't think that was part of the intent, but here we are. Um so I think that's a general comment from us and I think it was made a couple of meetings ago.
I think I think again, um history of this item is obviously was discussed many times um in planning board. And I think where it kind of landed after input, um you know, from um you know, input from the um uh from Beth Reynolds, you know, on this about about this end of the corridor and um location of businesses here. But originally and also and also um looking at the the original tent of um of twelve Pond Street back when it was designed, was that also was before the time when um the uh the facility next door was not there. And so that um and that and so probably with a different vision of that whole area um than the one that we are dealing with, which has a care facility next door. So really, this end of the street, um in my opinion, has already become kind of residential. And um and the the opportunity for large amounts of commercial maybe isn't. I'm not saying it couldn't have more, but maybe it is no longer the, you know, only the only right solution, I guess, for for this lot. So um so looking at the conditions where we are right now with an existing building, existing care facility, residential care facility next door, residential condos in the back, residential condos across the street, up the hill, and kind of very quickly progressing into an residential neighborhood down the street. From this, it certainly to me didn't rule out residential, I guess. So as we started to look at the various functions of this um, you know, of this proposal, um what we could get it to do, what it would be, we could get it to contribute to Ashland. Um that's kind of where we got where where we are on the on the residential, commercial mix. Um and and the various other features of the site that that it has now that it didn't have in the beginning.
I think um I think I I I think people think that that Valley Farm is sort of an anomaly in terms of the residential sitting at the street at one twenty six pond. Because all the other residential is either hidden up the hill, you know, just across the street from this is um. Well, it used to be the the video place, but now it's a restaurant and um I forget the other things. And there's Sears used to be over there, but that's commercial. And there's residences behind it and there's Shaws and there's residences behind that. So, you know, I think there's a fair number of people in town who always thought that it would be commercial to the front and residential to the back, not this this mix like this. So I think that's where that comment was coming from.
Um. Yep, understood. Um and if.
But but uh one one thing that just um I I think Tricia made a pretty good summary. Uh there there is there this, there is uh something that we discussed many times in terms of the so so some of the uniqueness of of these of these places. The it it is true that after that uh system living facility, uh the commerce, the commerce nature of the street really opens up. And I think that's the intent. Uh the the overlay um encourages uh density on both residential and commercial. It does not exclude one or the other. Uh but but it but but uh recognizes that 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 both kind of um have to live together. Uh the it it's important to 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 know because there were many comments at the beginning where people were were thinking that, oh, maybe this wants to be a biotech building or something, which prompted the discussion that 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 ju- just just trying to wish a certain use doesn't really make it. So and 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 you could end up with a with a five story curtain wall uh box that is dark at night here if if you go that route. So there there's a certain danger on on not recognizing the the residential nature of the surroundings. And and so this is how I I think I remember the history of of the process developing. Uh it started from a from a one, I think, small um uh corner uh uh commercial space to now being the 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 whole front of the first floor facing the street. And I guess the concern that the the what we encouraged the proponent and the architect to do is to really face the street uh with 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 something that is welcoming from coming from from Hollisland that initiates, gradually initiates that transition into heavy uh commercial. Uh it it is good that we're not having a five story building to to start the the this this district, in my opinion. And 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 the the Wunner and 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 what's what that's giving to to the community and to the district and to this street, I think is if 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 far are 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 ways where you could get with with a building that's much closer to the street and it's five story stall. Uh so so there's there's that balance. I think that's what the discussion that 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 transpired. Um and 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 the other facility is is simply there. And that's a residential use that this 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 piece of land got landlocked into those uses. Uh otherwise, if that was a full commercial space, then then I would say this may have a different nature. But I I think that's my recollection of the history.
Well, you asked why it was in there, so I was telling you. Um that's why it was there. So.
I I remember the same, you know, history of it all. I just I saw the note and wondered if you guys had just had any any new news on that. But understood, I I remember everything the way everybody else does.
No, fair, fair, fair question.
Yeah, on a uh on a bike room or bike storage, is this room been found for that inside the building?
We will have a bike room as well, yeah, inside the building. And we've also um in the landscape plan, we're proposing uh some bike rack loops uh underneath the pergola um for the public to be able to use.
Yeah, and in any case, just to know, we we just also got these notes from the design review committee. The planning board just received these notes in the past few days. And I can't say that any of us have a chance had a chance to review them, what I would call thoroughly, certainly not myself, though I did read them before before the meeting. So um I would assume that we would also be continuing some of these discussions or that these topics would come up again um at our next meeting when we've had really uh both um when the architect has had time or the applicant has time to read all these notes and we have as well. So um not definitely not the end of the discussion here, but um um mov- moving forward for sure. And I see one hand raised from the public, so let's let's.
Tricia, can I just jump in quickly?
Oh, I'm I'm sorry, Deepa, yeah, go ahead.
No, no worries. Um I'm probably don't want to repeat any of what you already said. I I agree with all of you that I like this two three story high tower versus what we were seeing before. Um but I'm I'm I I start to see what Bill was kind of alluding to about the scale of the trees to the building. And I think Kevin's I suggestion about the Mansard roof was also kind of tied in some way to the scale of all the elements in the space. So it feels like maybe we should, and again, like I said last time, I am seeing all kinds of colors on my screen. So I don't know if that's happening for everybody else, but I'm definitely seeing a very, very light washed out blue right now and not gray. So I don't know if anybody else is seeing. So I thought we talked about color samples, just so that we don't have this issue. But um what it's doing to me because of those colors that I'm seeing on my screen is it's starting to create three horizontal bands, which is making the building, I guess, in this case longer. And we are attempting in some way to cut down the height. If that is what the design intent is, I'm not sure if that is what it is. But it feels like some of those elements, like the entry of the retail, uh I believe you have eye doctor in this corner and a dentist on the other side. I don't know if that still holds good. Um but it feels like that entry on the other side feels like that tower looks like it's forced versus natural because now you created three bands of materials and colors at those points. So I feel like we should really look at the scale and the color and very similar to what we talked a little bit earlier in the other project, just make sure that we don't start to have too many things happening on every ten feet of the building and kind of look at see, are we trying to achieve verticality here? Are we really trying to make the building look shorter than what it is? It feels like right now it's fighting a bit. Um.
I think would it help in in the same way, um well, first of all, I have a question for the applicant. Are these trees shown um as initially planted? Or are these trees shown years into the future?
Day one.
Day one, okay, so the trees are at day one. So um so obviously that that's a scale thing. And then what we had talked about in the other project, we're asking for um elevations um where flat on elevations um instead of renderings. Maybe one where we're just seeing the building and then maybe one from the street so that we can see it with the tree cover and we can see it without the tree cover to really start to look at those um, you know, to start to look at the where the colors are, how they repeat, instead of always saying everything in perspective.
We with that, sorry, we had previously issued uh color elevations.
It but with um with the changes that with the current changes?
We can update the we.
Yeah, just.
Hadn't gotten to this point, but yes, everything else is, the colors are the same. I I that's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, ab- absolutely, just an update, just an update based on the current thing, so.
And just and we did drop samples off of all the siding colors there at Peter's office.
Yep, just to know, samples are in my office and I I apologize that I haven't sent the email out of the parkers.
Is that for both projects, Peter, or just one?
Just five oh one, they submitted uh project samples there in the office. If anybody wants to come by and see them, I'm happy to pull them out. Um I think that happened earlier in the week.
All right, thanks to them for doing that.
Um and the other one that I had is I'm assuming that where you have the five oh one pond sign, this may be getting into weeds, but I'm assuming that the masonry is not white. So you're looking at some warm combination of stones there for that short wall. Um it feels like this this pergola thing looks really weak in the context. And um adding to what um Kathy mentioned about um Post Office Square, those are obviously stone columns and then they have a very different materiality to that whole um canopy. And definitely it's a larger stretch than what it is. Um it I don't know if the scale of this pergola really looks weak in this context, or is it just me because I'm seeing very, very different colors than I'm assuming it actually is? But it feels like it feels very insignificant. It doesn't feel like it's gelling with that Wunner concept in any way than from what images that we saw earlier as inspiration images. So something to maybe it's matter of, again, if you start to look at the scale of the building and that pergola, maybe it will help and the trees that surround it. So um to me, something got lost in the scale of this project.
I had I had certainly assumed Deepa as well that this this pergola is always kind of, it had the shape that we we talked about a lot. But the actual kit of parts for this thing was, in my mind, still always had not been looked at, was still kind of always just a placeholder.
Yeah.
Um that that had not been completely designed. I mean, you can almost uh you can almost like call out the sizes of wood there, right? Versus it being a piece that's actually designed. So that that would be my impression as well. And I would hope that that, you know, goes through another iteration of exactly what that shelter looks like.
Yeah, I think it's a scale that's thrown off, even if it is like an initial concept. It's a scale of the massing behind it versus what's in front of us. But again, thank you for the design review team and the applicant for taking all our comments and really moving that forward. It I think it's come a long way in last few weeks. Thank you for all the effort.
Agreed.
So um before you go on, since we're talking about this pergola, I did have a conversation with a landscape architect on the last design review meeting. They liked the color of the vines and and what we were talking about and what I just mentioned. Um and the only other thing I'll say is we originally had, the pergola was a little taller. We asked for it to be brought down so it would be more in scale um with the building. Um and I think if it's, once it's fine covered, I think it will look, it'll look fine. It'll look very different and colorful in the front here with the plants. I mean, I think they show a red truck behind that just to demonstrate like a food truck. And that might be adding a lot, you know, sort of a, I don't know. Uh it takes away from the architecture of the building that you want to see, but it also shows things in context. So that was my feeling about the that color in there, even though I find it a little sort of in the way when I look at it.
So is this height reduced pergola, is that what we are seeing now? Maybe that's what is.
No, I I I don't think we have, but but I have to say I agree with with Kathy on 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 this. Uh I I think the the columns look very too a little too slender and 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 doesn't look that the 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 if you look at the size of a person, it may maybe it's a little too tall. I mean, it's something that the landscape architect could could work on, but I I agree with that.
Were you agreeing with Deepa or Kathy?
Uh I I agree with I agree with each on 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 different on different fronts. But Kathy just mentioned the height of the of the pergola, the elevation, it seems.
I think they had both mentioned the height, that's what I was I was commenting.
Just uh just the height is around eleven, ten to eleven feet currently.
Is is that coplanar with the datum of the of the banding of the of the retail?
Pretty close, yep.
Okay, it looks like it could go a little low, but um but it also depends on the on the detailing like like Tricia said. So it's worth advancing a little bit.
Okay.
Confused, is it too tall or is it too small? Is it too high or is it too low?
The thing is about substance.
Yeah.
You know, so it might be a little high, it might be a little high. And it's almost like you can say, okay, those are six by six posts and there's a two by ten on top. And on top of that is a two by two square. You know, it's almost like you can just nail out the component parts when it probably will be a little bit more enriched than that.
I I I think what what Deepa was saying, maybe maybe the the height is a little of a a like an optical trick because the columns are not hefty enough, I guess. So they seem to think.
Yeah.
It's a, yeah, scale, scale height, it's a combination. There's something missing between all all parties.
And I think we totally get it. Your focus obviously was on the architectural part of it. These are elements that needs to catch up as you're developing it. So um I think it's a design process that we absolutely see. It's going in the right direction, at least from my point of view for this project. But again, as you're moving, just pay attention to the colors and how these bindings are vertical versus horizontal. What are we trying to achieve? Are we trying to reduce the verticality? And is that why we have these three horizontal bands? And or are we fighting it in some locations like the retail entry? Is that losing importance because of those horizontal bands? And if that should be treated in a little different way, then it's adjacent bay or something like that. So I feel like it just needs a little bit of attention.
All right, I guess I will finally let Mr. De Sone. All right, I guess I will finally let Mr. De Soney get in here with his two cents. Mark, you want to unmute?
Thank you. Um, th- these two cents, when inflation comes down to one. I have a couple of questions. Is, the question first to the designer and architect and down to, to you, Mrs. Chairman. First to, first to the architect and designer at the same time, they can answer. You've been going through the process here with the planning board and now with the design committee. Can you tell, can you say honestly, and I'm not gonna, I don't want to put you in the spot, but I want, I want to know an answer, is how well have you been treated through this whole process?
Well, I'm not quite sure how to answer the question. Uh, like everyone's had plenty of mutual respect and there's been a lot of wonderful ideas passed back and forth. And then we're gonna get better project out of it at the end.
I think that's a good answer, Mark. Can we move on a little bit?
Yep, I want to ask Mr. Steven the same question.
I agree, it's a process and, and we understand that. Um, and we're trying to get it right, trying to make it be something special.
Okay, and now down to the chairman, I got two questions. What's the next steps after this?
Well, I think the next step for us is that uh we have a report back from the third party review. And so we need to look at that carefully and every component. They'll be working back and forth with the applicant and we need to look at it too to see if we have any questions. Um, there's obviously detailing things here that we've talked about today that aren't fully resolved. So the design part, including the design review committee notes, which I, I mentioned just, just a little bit ago that we've just received. So we haven't, we've discussed a lot of it here, but we haven't had a chance to really go through it um in detail. So I think tho- those questions aren't fully resolved yet. So today is just another step in the process as far as, as far as I'm concerned. Um, just, just more information, more voices. And um, and, and next time we go into a different kind of detail with the, with the third party review.
Okay, now my last one will be, does any of this project here, does any special permits land into this?
Peter?
Uh, yeah, this project has some, has a special permit, yes.
What parts?
I think anything on Pond Street.
Anything a mixed use building on Pond Street is a special permit, Mark.
But what about this, this five oh one?
Yeah, it's a mixed use building on, or using the Pond Street overlay district, it's a special permit.
Okay, and then, does, um, does it work with the heights, uh, the heights regulations?
Uh, it does, yes.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Mark.
All right, thank you. Um, any final questions or comments before we continue this with the applicant's um permission to, to July fourteenth? All right, seeing none, I will make a motion to continue um five oh one Pond Street public hearing until July fourteenth.
That's taken then.
And a roll call vote.
Deepa, I can die.
Marcelo, I.
And Jersey, I.
Yep, I'm okay, I.
And Tricia can die. So that is continued to July fourteenth. Uh, Peter, you want to give Anna a text?
Yep, just did.
And um, thank you again to the design review committee for the time you spent on this. Um, we will be reading those notes thoroughly. Um, and appreciate the, the insights you've, you've had on it. So thank you very much for that. We know it is not an easy job on those late night meetings. So we appreciate your time.
We also did, um, we did a record turnaround to get the, the second one available for both projects. So I think in the future, we need to definitely have a discussion about that because we just need to have more discussion um among ourselves before we send a document like that off to you all. Um, just to make sure we've got all our Ts crossed, our Is dotted, things like that.
Yep, um, definitely going to be a learning curve as we uh continue to adjust this process.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. All right then, Peter, you were contacting Anna.
Uh, yes.
Thank you, thank you to the applicant and to the design review committee.
Appreciate it.
More than welcome to stay on for all the excitement remaining excitement.
Okay, Anna is back and joining us.
Okay.
Hey, can I ask with both those projects, what's the next step with that third party review? Do they go back and forth directly with the applicants? Or do the applicants kind of answer questions to us or how does it work?
Typically, there are, obviously they have designer review. Um, yeah, they'll go back and forth. They'll submit a letter, uh, which is kind of marks out, you know, um, you know, how they are responding to each and every comment. Um, but in most cases, I, the, the, uh, the two engineers will contact each other and work out any irregularities. Um, so I'm not playing the middle man and, and have to, and obviously I'm not engineering myself. So um, you know, the bigger projects, like a hundred, both projects, if there's any irregularities, the, the engineers are communicating with each other.
And then there are some issues such as the parking spots, right? That the third party, third party review is going to point out, but really come back to planning board and what, what we think about those. So it's not really an engineering problem, they're pointing it out as an issue, but it comes back to us.
Yeah, all, all the engineering stuff is worked out by the third party review and the engineer to obviously make sure there's a resolution, especially storm water. Um, but then when there's a situation such as the size of the parking spot or parking waiver, that's noted typically, however, it's up to the planning board to make that decision. As Tricia, yep.
All right, so the next item on our agenda is the twelve Pond Street colors. Peter, we don't have any further information on this, right? Oh, sorry.
I do have to recuse myself for this, so I can, I can get off and you guys can come back on.
Nope, Kathy.
We're actually not.
We're not discussing it.
Okay.
So I do want to note that today, late, late in the day, I did receive another rendering, updated rendering. It was too late in the day to even send out, but I'll send that out uh in the next day or two. Uh, but uh, we will not be discussing any of that.
Um, can, Kate, I, I wanted, I do want to fill in the board just a little bit about what has happened in, oh, maybe ten days ago before I left town again. Um, so whether you want to listen or not listen, it's not really decision based, I guess.
I think I will just stick to recusing and that way I'm not.
Okay, all right, so you're gonna step away?
Yes.
Okay, it'll be like three minutes, so, but Peter, you have Kate's number?
Do I? One minute.
Well, do I? I might too.
I can, I can send it by email. I did at one point, um, to Peter, but I can resend.
I, let me just double check to make sure I have it, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Uh, I just gotta grab my email. Uh, if you don't mind, send it via email.
Yep.
And then I can, I'll text you.
Okay, thank you.
There'll just be a couple of minutes though, I just want to make an update. Okay, so um, what, what I wanted to say about twelve Pond Street was that um, we'd all, I think, got the original renderings. Um, uh, I think you could pick up your copies at Town Hall. I think Peter also posted them online and they, there were four options. Um, so when, as Deepa wasn't here for the last meeting. And so I had, since she was the only other person on Pond Street with me, I had said that, Peter, I don't feel comfortable discussing these renderings without Deepa here. So we did not discuss them at the last meeting. Since that time, Deepa and I met um at twelve Pond Street, looking at the existing conditions. We have looked at it before, looked at the renderings and, um, and kind of discussing back and forth, kind of came up with what we thought was a, uh, let's say a fifth option. Um, that kind of worked with what was already there. Um, and so I made a bunch of notes on, on what we had discussed. I gave them to Peter to pass back to the, um, pass back to Charlie. Um, and asked him actually to do a fifth, fifth option with what Deepa and I discussed and to provide an existing condition PDF that we have something that shows the building as it is, the colors that it is right now, right? Um, so that the, so that it was easier to compare what it's doing right now to what we can, to what we can make it be, right? So I put those requests into Peter before I left town a week or so ago. Sounds like maybe he's just starting to get some of that, that material back. And that's why I would postpone talking about this again, because I think everyone should have that, be able to study that, that color combination um as well, as part of, as part of this mix. Frankly, I found some of the combinations just kind of random. And Deepa and I were trying to work with what was there and what we had talked about in previous meetings um with this project. Um, so I wanted to put a new one into the mix. Does anyone have any questions on that? Obviously, it was only discussed with me and Deepa and, and no one else, so.
Like a reasonable approach, Tricia.
Okay. All right, hoping to save, again, we, obviously when we discuss that, we can go any way we want on those, certainly under no obligation. And someone might have a better suggestion than Deepa and I came up with, but we at least wanted to put our best foot forward.
It is primarily the colors. It was just not anything to do with the architecture. Obviously, we can't salvage what was done from what, where it started. But I think we are trying to make the best use of what we have and get this project finished. So I think that's how we approached it and tried to see what is it that we can do to help Charlie finish the project and really um, from our side point of view, get as a project that's looking great on that very busy and important street that we have there, which is right now unfinished for so many days now, so. Again, color is very subjective, so I think we tried very, very hard to come up with a game plan. Hopefully, uh, all of you will like it and kind of give us a better direction from there on.
All right, that's, that's it, oh.
I got a question, yeah. So it's not about the colors so much, but um, I took a look over there the other day and the plantings towards the front of the building are really out of scale. And I don't know if you can encourage him to put bigger stuff in over there. Um, but then the other question I had is, there was supposed to be a little pocket park over there and I have no idea where that is anymore.
I think we'll have to look at the final landscape plan, if you can make a note of that, Peter. We'll dig it up, but otherwise, um, um, yeah, we'll have to see what was approved by the planning board and, and what is there now. But we can certainly look at that in terms of landscape.
And just a note, Tricia, uh, I do have pictures of the existing conditions out there. So I will, I'll, I can send those out to the planning board um along with the rendering that was submitted today, just to kind of further along the conversation.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think we can get Kate back on.
Yep.
And while that's happening, um, I don't know, do we, do we need a couple minute break? Or do we just have announcements and stuff to, to get through? Everyone's fine, just continuing? Okay, just go off for a minute if you need to. Um, Anna, I have a job for you, if you don't mind. I didn't, or, or Peter can do it either one. I, I don't have the agenda in front of me and I don't, so I don't know what that list is. So if you would be willing to, and if you'd be willing to guide that process through.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mind at all, except I just got thrown out of, um, out of Gmail, which is where I had this open, so just give me, give me a moment to run back on. If I can remember my password, I'd be more than happy to have the agenda.
Peter, do you want to message Kate?
Yep, I just did.
Okay.
Yeah, I just did.
I jotted down the primary agenda items on a piece of paper here, but I, I I don't need to buy a printer for my mom's house.
The first item I can just say is um, the public communications, how emails from the public are responded to and forwarded.
We need Kate for that.
We need Kate, and here she is. Our long. Oh, welcome back.
So Kate, the first item on the uh reports is um, is your proposal that I think everyone has received? About the, about the potential role of, of clerk, of redefining the role of clerk to something maybe that is valuable and what we actually need?
Yes.
Okay. Do you just want to introduce it by just what your thinking was or? Nothing formal, obviously.
Yeah, so I, I think we had talked about, um, I mean, maybe, I think it was led by me, but I think people did when they realized how maybe people should get uh response um from the board. Um, I don't think we've always been consistent about that. Um, so that's where it's coming from. Like, I, I think we do want to encourage public comment and I've seen the board um be pretty vocal about that lately and I think that's great, but um, so the idea would be just to try to get a consistent response and a plan where we're not, um, we're not talking about details because we can't and we shouldn't to acknowledge and encourage, continue to acknowledge and encourage public comment. Um, and I think if anyone had a chance to look at the document, there's kind of, I outline what I generally seen as kind of the buckets of categories. People may respond in some draft answers. Um, there's also some specifics if we go this direction to iron out. Um, like I noticed, sometimes we send comments to the applicant and I don't know that we always do that. And I don't know if we want to have a policy about that or if that's not necessary. Um, that kind of thing.
What do you mean by comments?
Um, so I, I believe, I, I saw, I might be making this up, but I don't think so. A public comment to either the planning board or the planning department, and I don't recall if I could find it, I believe was stamped public record and then sent to the applicant.
Well, just to jump in, well, public, any emails to the planning board or myself are considered public record.
Yes.
And so, you know, I, I do tend to, I, I do as, print them out and stamp them and put them in the file. You know, and if I think it's going to move the budget along in, in, in a, in a direction, then yeah, it's a, I, in my, from my point of view, I think it's appropriate to, to, to share those public comments with the planning, with the, with the applicant. Um, that's been something that professionally that I've done my entire career.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's a bad idea. I would like to see if we do that, to either have a policy or be consistent, so I think that would be helpful. Um.
So is this, is this a matter of, um, just reading through your text here, to have as part of the return email that, um, I think you have it in here, that your email becomes part of, is now part of the public record of this project or something like that? Is that what you're?
Um, well, that's, that's a, another, I guess there's two things. It's policy and procedure maybe separately. So that's not a bad idea to tell people so they, they get another sense. Not only was it shared with the board, um, but that is officially part of the public record. So that's, I think. So that's, I think that's a good thing. But I don't know that we need or want to um. Is every email received stamped and uploaded to the website? I'm not, I'm not asking for that necessarily, but I think that we should try to have a policy and be consistent.
Yeah, I think, um, I think in, in those kind of terms, it might be kind of hard because I wonder if um. People would um self. But I, I don't know, maybe not be as honest as what they would be if they know, hey, anything I say is going to be plastered on a website where it's really easy to get to. Versus um. Uh versus anybody can request that public comment, but they have to be serious about it um. To do that, I, I'm, I'm not sure. I also think it might be a lot of work um to stamp everything and put it up. Um versus just saying that it isn't part of the public record and.
Um, I, I. Yeah, I, I don't necessarily think to ask for that, but I do think. Um seeing that we are giving some and sending them to the applicant, I feel like we should have a policy about that.
A policy about what again, say?
About which ones do get dates stamped and sent to the app applicant and which ones don't.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, so that's, so it feels consistent and there's a process and policy.
Okay.
Um. I'm not saying that isn't, but I don't know, maybe because I'm a new member, but I don't believe we have some. Written policy stuff, because I did ask about that.
Yeah, um, yeah, I, I get what you're saying now. Um, for me, I guess it's the difference between. Comments like say, um, I think recently like Margie had a couple. Or, or Matt Marshquist had a, an email that were really filled with information about sustainability, like very specific, very. And that information that we, that would be very specific information that could be very useful to the applicant. Versus the also the many kind of emails, I just don't like this. I, I don't think there should be any apartments in Ashland. I, you know, ones that are, are of that nature, so I don't know how to um. You know, maybe, maybe it's, maybe it's the planning board deciding. I don't know what that process would be, I guess, like, like, like you said, how, what is the process by which we decide which comments should go? Are very detailed enough that they should go right through the, to the applicant versus ones that we're just absorbing at. As part of the planning board, people generally like the project, they generally don't like the project, you know, kind of thing. So.
I wonder, Peter, I wonder if you want to chime in here. As to what you thought was important to stamp and send it along and what you felt. Uh from your experience that did not require that stamp, but. There was other ways. I'm sure you, you have a better experience of why we did one way or the other.
I think it comes down to, you know, what, what the comment is, how, you know, how it pertains to the project, you know, I think. Sharing any comments with the applicant is appropriate, right? Because it's public comment on their application, it's about their application. It gives them awareness of what the public is, you know, what someone in the public realm is thinking about their project. Um. You know, I think. Some projects. The, the planning board, the planning office, we get swamped, like with emails, right? And it's a lot of work. Printing everything out, stamping them in, scanning them, okay, I'm gonna send these to this person, that person, it gets too much, right? But if it's a, but if a project and you get one, two, five, probably, you know, emails. Um. And, you know, you stamp them in and you scan them and, and it doesn't take too much time and, right? I think it's appropriate to just send them to the planning board. Obviously, they typically come to the planning board on the, the, the widespread planning board email, I guess. But I can be happy to respond and I to try, you know, I do say part of public record. And if, if, if you're asking for a sentence that says this is, will be shared with the applicant, I think that's appropriate as well. Um, and then I can share it with the applicant, just to kind of give them that awareness. Uh, but uh, but, and, and. I think depending on the email, the projects, you know, there's a lot that kind of goes into it. I don't think putting every email up on the website, I, I don't think that's appropriate. I think that's kind of a little bit too much. But um, but that's where I would kind of draw along.
Like the project that we had some time ago where there were a hundred and fifty emails on one day and literally the same content. I, I would have not expected that you would stamp and sign everything and send it along because it was kind of. Giving the same information. Yeah, so, um. Yeah, I'm not sure if this is a policy required for it, but that's just me.
Yeah, I'm happy to respond. I happy, I, and typically when there's a project that has a question in it. I respond and, you know, and I, and I try to find the tone in the air, you know, do you want, do you want, you know, within my response. Does, does everyone want to be CC'd? Obviously, we all have busy lives. How much of our inboxes are going to be filled up with actual planning board material, uh which is a whole other discussion to have. But uh, you know, I think, I think, you know, we like to, I like to respond and say it's not part of the public record and. You know, and, and typically there aren't, these aren't questions, these are statement emails, right? It's an opinion statement. There's no, I don't know what, what response that anyone is looking for from me. It's really from the applicant, right? So that's why I think it's appropriate to kind of send them along to the applicant, to kind of give them the heads up.
So, you know, another approach might be, like, we had talked about the clerk position. As being something that's a bit of an organizer for, so let's say you do have a hundred emails that come in or ten emails. The clerk could take on the responsibility of summarizing it for us. And it might make. The burden of putting everything online simpler because what could go online could be the clerk's summary. Hey, on this issue, we got a hundred emails that were pro-project. You know, certain emails were against project, here were key points, these materials are available in the planning department. Um, and that's much easier to make public on the website than a hundred and twenty emails, right? So, that could be another kind of approach where the clerk becomes the. Inventory person, if you will, of what is the public comment we got on this project? Let's make that a website-driven item. That can also be shared with the applicant, the applicant can get what they need from it. It's almost like a summary.
It feels like too much interpretations that. The, the content may get lost somewhere, and if you look at that after two years, wonder what this is about. Because obviously if the person has changed, it's how the clerk interprets and then how the board interprets. I, I, it feels like a too complicated communication style. It doesn't feel like a long, at least from my point of view, long-term solution. It only will add up to like right now, how we're reading meeting minutes of three months ago and it's like, what did we say that afternoon? It's like, we're gonna have one more step. Clerk trying to say, okay, how did they interpret the hundred and fifty emails, what they thought was the right thing? Are we gonna have another board member check that? Because obviously we don't want one person to be wise for five people. So are we going to start reviewing those summary again? I mean, it feels like too much.
Well, I assume like, I mean, obviously, we. We all read the emails anyway, like we all get the emails, we all read the emails, we may not make a note of them or print them out or anything, but we read them. And so maybe it's as simple as. Like, you know, like what Kate has here, there's a response that's more than. Received and sent to the planning board things, you know, it's, it's more detailed than that, it, it. It gives a little bit more information about what happens to their. Um, what happens to their letter, where they can get more information, you know, Kate has some of that in, in her drafts here. Um, but it might also be then the clerk's role to just very simply in, in a meeting. At the end of one hundred Chestnut Street, or maybe right at the beginning, you know, when we're kind of doing. The intro part, like, you know, Peter gives his kind of intro that maybe the clerk would say. You know, and this week we have, we got five letters, you know, on this from the public, we appreciate public comments. You know, we don't really, and all those were read by the planning board. We don't necessarily have to review what everybody said. Because it is part of the public record, the, and the comments were really for us. If someone wants to get on and say that same comment. In the meeting, they're free to do so, really, but that letter was for, for our benefit, right? So maybe it's as simple as that and not having to keep, I, I worry about having to keep a spreadsheet. Because there's many issues that sometimes in each letter, sometimes there are most multiple projects in, in a letter, right? So um, they could just come in all sorts of form, and I, I don't find them as being easily sortable, I guess.
Maybe what we could improve is the response time. Um, when an email comes from somebody out there, we acknowledge that email within a week. Two days, we set that time. I think that's more critical because what people don't get is. We all read it, nobody knows that we all read it, and that makes people impatient. And then comes another email because they don't think we read it, they feel uncomfortable that maybe you didn't go to the right inbox, so. Maybe it's that response time of acknowledging that we received it, like Tricia just used, how you said. Just acknowledging that one sentence, if it's something that people feel comfortable that we read it and we have that. In front of planning board members, maybe that may help.
Jumping in here, I think Kate's response and proposal is great. I think if we can, you know. I think we can use this and use this as a template and we could, you know. I can have it and Emma and I can use this template, right? To fill in and to send out and then uh, then kind of go from there. Um, I think the question is, do we want to add, your comment will be shared with the applicant, project applicant. Uh and I think we should do that within the, within the additional, within additional sentence.
You, you think we should do that? What was the last part of that, Peter? You said we should do that, we should share with the applicant.
And, and, and add a sentence within the template, within this template. That says, please know your comment may be shared or, or will be shared with the, with the project applicant.
But if there is a way on your website to add like that additional check mark, like if they want that to be shared or not. Um, so that it gets filtered automatically versus having another email sent back forth, I don't know if, what may help.
Well, it's, it's tricky, it's public record, it can technically be shared with anyone who asks, so you can't really give the public the option. I think the right way to frame it is, this is public record, it may be shared, period, the end. I don't think we have an obligation necessarily to ask for permission. It becomes public record the second they send it to us. We can, we, the. Public government officials, right? We, we, we are, we have to share it with the public upon request and upon certain circumstances. I, I think there's a separate question of. What do we choose to put on the website versus not? I do think we should talk in our retreat a little bit more about this because. I think the perception. When you go to the website and you can see certain materials. If we are choosing to share certain materials on the website, but not other materials. I do want to kind of dig into that a little deeper at the retreat. I think that, that doesn't, we, we should kind of put some thought into that. Because then we're kind of giving a perception publicly what we consider to be more important versus less important. So I think that does require some thought, but that's separate, that's a separate issue. It's a policy question that maybe we should dig in. At the retreat, but I absolutely like Kate, Kate's draft. Whether Peter sends it or the clerk sends it, as long as it goes out, I'm happy. I, I think it just needs to be edited to be really, really clear. It's public record. This may be shared with the applicant or with the public.
Yeah, I mean, at the. I, I think at the last meeting, I had noted that I thought, um and not to put pressure on Kate or anyone in this position. But I thought coming from an actual member of the planning board. In, in most cases, I mean, I, it would be better. I think, I think sometimes, you know, when it's, when it's. Someone saying, I mean, new houses that are going to be built in Ashland, yep, Peter, go for it, right? But if it's something about a public hearing, about it's really public feedback, then I think it does matter to come from someone elected. Um, someone that's actually a part of the board rather than Peter or Emma, that's, that's.
I mean, I, I kind of agree with that. I think our staff is very busy and, and I definitely feel like. If someone on this board, if Kate wants to step up and take on that kind of. More personal, community-driven approach, I think that was important, Kate, to you when you ran. I'm all for it, you know, um.
And. But, but, but I think on the same, on, on the same light, I, I think we should try, I think that's all helpful and uh, but to, to, to what some of you have said and Peter too. Uh, I think we should keep it to its, to its minimum simplicity. I think creating a process out of this, just. A, a process is good just when it solves a problem. I, I think the problem is that there's a light, lack of communication, then, then address it that way. Uh maybe whether it's the presentation of the, in the summary on, on the board meeting. Uh, uh, or maybe an update on, 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 on the format, but I, I, I think. Let's try to make sure that we don't get into a multi-step process unnecessarily.
Yeah, agreed.
I mean, I think it's straightforward. If it's like a blank email like this, that's very clean cut that we agree on, I don't think it's going to get that complicated. It's not like the clerk has to. Write some kind of fancy thing.
No, I think it's a matter of like when mentioning like keeping a spreadsheet of different kinds of issues or things like that, like. We'll have no one that ever volunteers to be clerk again.
Yeah.
And, 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 and then the public are gonna start saying that, uh, that, that interpretation was incorrect and then this favoring this and not that. It, it, it creates more confusion than what it solves. Potentially.
Yeah.
And if they give a brief summary that, that. Makes the minutes then too, so it's, it's got some record, right, so.
Oh, right.
No, no need to keep a spreadsheet, there's an extra backup.
I mean, I, I think that, I think if there is a clerk, like if Kate wants to step up and give us a very brief, high-level summary. I don't see any harm in it. I think there's only benefit because generally the questions we get asked is, did you see my comment? Or. I sent something to the board, right? And this will just reinforce that, yes, we got public comment, we reviewed it. I think that's gonna help us.
Yeah, I think, I think both are a, a little bit more re, robust answer, which Kate has already um, already laid out here. Um, coming from a member of the planning board versus staff. And a mention, not necessarily, we got it, not necessarily like Peter did today about naming a specific person. But a mention saying, you know, we got five letters about this project today and they were all sent and read by the planning board. You know, um, I think that's gonna be, I think that's gonna be enough, at least it's. Yeah.
We can try, whether I'm one of five will be always a question, and I doubt we will be able to solve that, but I'm sure we can try and improve ourselves. As we go by, but I feel like, was I one of the five emails that the board got with? What prompted me that question? And I wonder if then there'll be another follow-up question for that, so we just have to kind of improvise as we go, I guess.
Yeah, I think so, but I, I, I think, I don't know, I think most people are gonna say, hey, they said it was going to the planning board. You, you know, to say, oh, well, they sent six to the, five to the planning board and mine was number six and didn't get there. But there's definitely some conspiracy theorists out there and, but uh, but I think people will be good with that, you know.
Well, and I.
I mean, we always.
That's a great point. Um, if they were paying attention enough to, to notice that, then we'd be happy. I'd be happy, right? Because that means people are engaged.
Right, right.
I mean, keep in mind, we, as a planning board, anytime we get public comment, we're free to discuss it among ourselves when the agenda comes up, so. At any point, any, any one of us could characterize or mischaracterize an email, right, at any point. So I, I think we should give ourselves the benefit of the doubt. What we're trying to accomplish here is we're trying to recognize that we get public comment. We potentially have a clerk willing to volunteer to do, to kind of summarize it for us. Let's give it a shot. If it doesn't work, we can stop.
So Kate, what feedback do you need on this? I mean, we've been talking kind of randomly.
Um, so. I'm gonna say we're, we're not, we're um, I think I should do another. Draft, which, I mean, can that be discussed at the retreat then? Just, it's just really updating and acknowledging. That the comments become part of public record. Um. And were we gonna say that's it, period, or that they could be shared? I guess not.
The comments may be shared with the applicant or members of the public.
Um, and then I think the ones that. To update this, that if it was going to be a specific question, I guess we'd know because if it says. What projects are coming, Peter would already answer that and then I would know and then I'm, there, we don't need to send another one from the planning board. Is that the way we would handle that? So, like I, I, someone said, are there projects coming up? I don't know that. Peter answers them.
Yeah, I think. I think there's.
I think the difference between questions and commentary. So if the public is coming in, I have a comment about a project. That's the clerk's responsibility. If the item comes in with a question, what is the status of something? What is happening with this project?
Right.
I want to know what's going on, you know, what's happening here, something is happening in town. That's more of a Peter issue. Because it's kind of a general question. So I don't think this. Volunteering thing, Kate, that you're stepping up to, if that's what you're doing, is about answering questions. I think it's more of gathering commentary. On actual projects before us.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, I think I just want to write that to be clear. And again, I think to whoever said it's a good point that we can try things and. Tweak them or change them, so.
I think it's a good question, though. I mean, that's a good way of summary. Is it a comment or is it a question? And sometimes they disguise themselves in in different ways, but I think when you go to respond to it, it it will be apparent, you know, which one it is, so.
And then I would just say generally questions will be responded by um town planning department. Um if the policy does not, it can be published or not, but between us, what do we agree what we're doing or attempt to do.
Yeah, I mean, I I think the way I would frame it as questions are are staff. Comments on a project is kind of the what we're addressing here. And I think if you get something that's both, then you carbon copy Pete. And you say, Pete, please handle the question part. Do you know what I mean? So if it comes with like sub-part one is the comment and then there's a bunch of questions that are clearly for Peter. There's not really a lot of that and you can carbon copy him.
Okay, and I did have that in a sample like request, like a specific zoning question. I could say um. That again, simply acknowledging we received it and that um planning department would respond. But I don't know if that's necessary, like we don't need to create more work either.
Yeah, I don't think that's necessary. I almost feel like the things for your comment, it's part of our public record. It might go to the public kind of thing is enough, right? And then if there's a question, Peter will handle it. As a theme.
Yeah, and then I guess the only other thing I had sample, which I will. Um pretty much try to copy and paste, I think, to make it easier and consistent, but um. If we're talking about a specific project, like how detailed do we have to say? Can we just say five oh one pond or do I have to refer to it to? The exact uh public, you know, hearing.
I mean, I I think it's just the, I think it's just the how we refer to it. It's a hundred Chestnut Street or it's two twenty-five Pond Street versus two twenty-five Street. Special permit and like, you know, I mean, people don't even know what that, most people don't even know what all that part means, you know.
Um I mean, I would encourage Kate for this to be even simpler than that, so you don't have to necessarily figure out which project it is. You know, you wrote about a project before the planning board. You can find information about it on our website. Like I would make it more, otherwise you're going to have to cut and paste and look for the right name constantly.
It's true. You could make it even simpler and just, you know.
Um, yeah, I think I can, I can update the draft and get that. For the retreat. To make sure, so and and I guess we would finally decide and I won't do anything until then.
Does that give you enough to work with? Okay. All right. Anna, do you do you have the list up?
I found the list, so the next item is sustainability committee. Well, that's all it says.
Yeah, well, we know, uh this is again, um what we had said last time, then we went through all these items last time, that this is just our way of keeping track of.
Yep.
Uh if there's nothing to report, there's nothing to report, so.
Oh, from me. Got it. I'm slow. Um so I'm catching up. So the sustainability folks on the net zero, we we were prepared to present. Uh like a thirty-minute presentation at either at this meeting or the next meeting. So I think I wrote to Trisha and Peter, whenever the time is right. Um we were prepared to come in and do a little presentation. I figured that's not today and it would be at the next meeting.
I I think Matt said that he actually was it, it was, I think Matt said he wasn't available today, Matt March.
Okay.
I believe he then said he was available for the fourteenth. Is that right, Peter?
I believe, so I can go back and look at the email.
Yeah.
Perfect. The next item is design review committee.
I think we. I think the.
We're good.
Yeah, I mean, I think that process is now going, we'll be working on it. We should. The bylaws again, when when. When Kathy has a chance to look at my comments, they'll be coming back at, you know, my way, I guess, um but.
Aren't we coming to your retreat?
Isn't that on the twenty-ninth?
I think so. We have meetings the twenty-seventh, twenty. But we probably went.
I mean.
Lots of meetings I have to put into my calendar.
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to discuss the bylaws, though. Um we would, I would want to have. Your written comments back. Like I sent you a bunch of written comments because we don't want to, we'd spend the whole retreat just talking about that, so.
Um part of it, part of what we had to discuss was the actual process itself. And see if there are more things we needed to iron out between us. And I'm not sure where we stand about the. Bylaw comments right now because we've been spending all our time on. Hundred Chestnut and five oh one pond.
Yeah, so um I just want to make sure that those those retreats have to be, are have to be, as we have already learned, ultra-efficient. So if something isn't pre-edited coming in or pre-organized, then it's not ready for a retreat, so.
So when's your retreat?
Yeah, I could have missed it. Do we have a date locked in?
Twenty-ninth, it was next Wednesday.
And what time are we starting?
It was seven, uh excuse me, it was a Google, we did this whole um. We did a uh.
We did a poll, but did we finalize a date on it?
We did.
Yes, it was the twenty-ninth.
Okay, I missed it. So five to seven?
I know the twenty-seventh. Five thirty to seven. I know that the twenty-seventh, we also have the.
Monday night, we have the Board of Selection joint meeting on master plan.
Yeah.
Is that the master plan or the comprehensive?
Comprehensive plan.
I'd say I, two different terms, same.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is the next item on our on our agenda.
Yep.
So are we having this the? Um okay, so the comprehensive plan, I guess all we're doing Monday is having that meeting and um. I had reached out to Tricia and Pete to see if there was any benefit to having some kind of presentation for it to kind of outline. Our comprehensive plan for the comprehensive plan, um. And I I give Peter kind of like potential talking points. So I'm more than happy to volunteer to help prepare a little kind of. Presentation on behalf of the planning board, if that's helpful, um.
If you would like to do so, please do. I think um regarding talking points, um I think Michael had. Put it put a short agenda up and I think he has some talking points um that he wanted to to kind of spearhead, but I think. Uh what I have concluded, it's going, you know, it's more or less a conversation between the planning board, even. The select board on what next steps have to take place. Uh but i- if you want to put a presentation together, Anna, it's.
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking like a very high level, hey, here's here's what we did. Here's was, here was our process, here's what we're thinking for a process and why, kind of thing. I think I sent you the talking points, very high level. Um you know, it was based on a certain town, you know, we looked for specific items, we were trying to fill. Capacity for the consultant in the contract position, all that stuff. So kind of high-level explanation of why it's so comprehensive. The comprehensive plan for the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, so I think I think from the select board's point of view and and the um strategic plan. So I think part of the conversation, I'm not sure about this, but is going to, you know, figure out how we can. How we have like these these two things going on now, one. And and do they overlap? Do they fold together? Do they? How do they inform each other? How do? You know, as part of this overall thing. So I think it's, I think it's about both both of those. All of those things.
Do we have any details of the strategic plan so we could be thinking of how those? I mean, just again, like we said in retreat, trying to make it efficient, the more information we have ahead of time.
Yeah, I mean, Peter, I think that's a question for Michael. I mean, I don't know, has anything, has has? Has the select board seen anything about it? Have we, you know?
He's seen draft, you know, I think it's, I think it's still in the draft format, you know, and I think that's where it kind of sits. Uh I think there's some chapters that are a little bit further along than others. And I know he worked with the Collins Center to kind of work to to do this. Um I do want to just state that um. I've reached out to a couple of towns that have finished master plans, that have kind of gone through the master planning process. Just to kind of get an idea of the amount of money each town has had to spend and 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 so I think we'll probably talk about that on Monday a little bit. Um I know the town of Wellesley did what's called, did a comprehensive and unified plan. Um and I think we had a, Michael and I had a conversation with the town manager about what their process was. And so I think. You know, we've been doing a little bit of work on our end about what uh what other towns and communities have been doing. I've been looking um mostly at, you know, what other towns have been spending, um and I think that's all part of that discussion and. I I we drafted up a a memo and I can send that out to the planning board tomorrow. Just to uh in in anticipation for Monday.
Yeah, just the sense that instead of a very linear, this is what's going to happen. I have a, I got the sense that it was really going to be more of a discussion, like let's work out what is going to happen. Let's let's get all the voices on the table and that was my sense, but like that it could be just. My interpretation.
That's my sense as well.
So.
I think it'll be good to get as much detail as possible in advance. I look forward to that memo. I I recall that. You know, our discussions as a board were very much based on on Peter's input and Michael's. Um and that our plan was consistent with what other towns were doing and consistent with Michael's concerns about capacity and finances, so. I I'm very curious to see the memo and kind of how it differs from prior input we received. Some of which was public, um so that we can certainly make amendments to our plan as we need to. So I'm. The more we can get ahead of time, the better, so that we're prepared since we did a lot of work. Um and I think it'll be really helpful. So the next item is inclusionary zoning.
I don't think there's, as far as I know, there's nothing new. I was going to say, besides the meeting minutes that that we were going to look at, but.
Yeah, I know, and Brandy uh gives the eye. She, we communicate about how to get this, um and maybe. It makes sense to have a a meeting. I'm going to work with Brandy on this one to kind of get this back up on. Up on the uh one of the front burners.
You mean the minutes for the inclusionary zoning?
Well, no, inclusionary zoning, just a topic as a whole.
Got you. I noticed that the minutes for it were not listed on our agenda for tonight, but they were attached by Emma.
No, there were, you know what, I the 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 agenda was revised.
Got you.
Yeah, there was agenda, the agenda was revised since I sent it out on Friday. And so I, I, with knowing Monday was a holiday, I sent it out, I posted the agenda. And then I amended the agenda on, excuse me, on Tuesday, but those minutes were on the, are on the posted agenda.
I'll make sure to mention those when I get to to that item. So the next item is CPC.
Um there is no update on, no update on CPC. We did not have a meeting. Um I got noticed that. My term as CPC representative, I believe, ends August thirty-first. Um it has been less than a year because obviously I only took over after Joe left, so um. We can discuss that when we get closer. If someone has a interest in CPC, um uh we just need a member. On that committee, so uh we can discuss any interest in it um at that time, but that's all I have.
The next item is scenic roads outreach.
Uh I have no update on this, I'm sorry.
And I always bring it up, Peter, how's that tree going?
It is, I talked to Will Correa about that uh this past week. It's on our radar. And uh we are going to plant a tree at the site.
Really exciting. I look forward to discussing again next time.
Same thing, though, the budget doesn't really, the budget, the read, the budget is to kick in until the end of the month.
No, I got you.
And um we're going to probably do it in the fall when it's peak uh plans in season.
Adessa, sir, sorry.
Quick comment, Kathy, because we're trying to end the meeting.
Sorry, sorry about my dog earlier. Um what's the question about scenic roads outreach?
We we just, we had this, sorry, you know, we we had this thing that came up uh. At least a year ago, where it seemed that people on scenic roads probably don't realize that what the rules are. On a scenic road and we thought maybe there's a way we could just send out a little memo, a newsletter. To everybody along a scenic road so that they understand what they need to go through if they're going to alter a wall or cut down a tree. That's all.
So I just have this radical idea because my dog was actually barking at somebody who was. Per usual, driving too fast down the street here. And um do we have any policies in town about? Uh scenic roads and the speed at which vehicles drive? Because honestly, you can't see the scenery the way some of the people drive down scenic roads in our town.
I don't know, but we're not going to address it during the the little updates part, so hold on to that thought.
Okay, because it's definitely a thought and I'm definitely interested in seeing if it can be pursued.
Kathy, I will tell you, speed limits are su- or or dealt with at the select board level. The planning board does, the planning board does not issue speed limits.
I know planning board doesn't issue them, but if they had some commentary or some thoughts about it. It might go a long way towards sort of uh making our town more pleasant.
Here's where I'm going to be a dictator. We're going to move on. Sure, it's ten thirty your time.
Thank you. I'm just cracking up Catherine because I'm thinking about riding my motorcycle really fast into town. From Route nine on, is it Badger that has those beautiful trees? I have to say, I I barely see them when I do that. Um.
There you go, see?
On that note, uh Adessa circulated decision is the next item.
The decision for Adessa was circulated, town hall has been denied, special permit. Um I think everyone received that. Decision as an item, Emma sent it out a lot ago. Uh I have no updates on it besides. It was a decision, it was circulated, town hall has been denied that project.
I think that's it.
I'm sorry, so the project was denied, is that what she said? MBK Communities is the next item.
That one, we're still waiting. Actually, like every other community is in a holding pattern, waiting for uh waiting for uh next step from the state level.
Retreat date, Ju- June twenty-ninth?
Next Wednesday.
Yep, we got that. Then we've got administrative matters. We begin with applications received.
So we have no new applications received at this point. I do want to make a quick note that um. In our decision for Forty Summer Street, which was the TKO boxing, um there was a situation where. The office and it was my, we are all, we um. Different talk, we by means of the decision were not correct, it was for a different application. So I talked to Lisa, that decision was actually recorded, I just did. And so I talked to Lisa Mead to talk about what the best steps are. And so I'm going to have to re-advertize that case. And then we're going to have to reissue a new decision with the findings of the foreword. And so that's going to appear on our agenda. However, that was a situation where there was an ops and I'm just going to correct it and fix it.
Well, we have to vote on it again or just?
It will have to be voted on.
Okay, so we open it, we vote on it.
Vote on it.
Do we have to take public comment? We didn't have any the last time.
We didn't have any the last time. So I don't see why not, yeah.
Okay.
I just want to give everyone the heads up. All right, moving on.
Yep, next item was future meeting dates, June twenty-seventh joint meeting with the select board to discuss comprehensive plan. And there's also, yep, so that's happening. What time is that?
Seven o'clock.
Great. And then there is an update on the virtual public meeting extension. It says December twenty twenty-three.
So I am still waiting to confirm from the legislature pass the, I think it was. Last I heard, it was in the Senate and it's part of the Senate's budget plan, but uh. But uh I believe that um we are going to be allowed to use virtual meetings for the next, for for the time being.
And finally, we've got two meeting minutes to review the April fourth joint meeting minutes. Where inclusionary zoning was discussed and the May fifteenth planning board meetings uh minutes. Um. For the April fourth, twenty twenty-two minutes, do we need to say something, Peter, or we can just start talking about them?
We can start talking about them.
I re, I mean, my review was very simple, I think, like, not a big deal. I think the first page, the first massive paragraph, my my name was slightly misspelled, just a slight correction. And then page four, there's a paragraph, third full paragraph that begins with Anna presented Burlington Vermont model. Um, the first couple of sentences were a bit confusing. Um, because there's like a sentence that begins with, the second sentence starts with asked Alex Copeland. I think you, I think it should say Anna asked. I think my name was missing. And then the the next um, the next sentence reads, Alex said model was reflective of Ashland. I think technically he thought the Burlington Vermont model was not, and the model he was presenting was. So I think we just need to edit that sentence to say Alex said the model he presented was reflective of Ashland rather than the Burlington model. Do you know what I mean? I think the sentence is actually saying the opposite of what Alex was saying. And those are my corrections.
Okay.
Does anyone else have corrections?
My only observation was some of the names were you, there was only first name and some had first name, last name. So I'm not sure if there was a reasoning or why there was a mix of things. And I don't know if we wanna make sure that it's consistent. And I haven't noticed this before, but that particular letter is very obvious that there are some people with first name, last name, but some just first name, and I don't know.
Yeah, it's the history of these notes. Obviously, these weren't done by the planning boards' usually usual process.
Yeah.
This is done by the select board process, or, you know, and probably an unusual process for for them. So um, so yeah, it was a little bit, and and in fact, they had already been these minutes had been already approved by the select board. So my question to Peter was, you know, what what do we do with these, you know, kind of thing? Do we, do we have our our own corrected meeting minutes that are different than the select board minutes? And um, I I guess we have a, you know, a right to correct whatever we want uh before approval, so. Otherwise, I might have added them quite a bit, but.
I think we can make those corrections. I don't see why not add last names. Um, make their sentences. We, I mean, we talked about Alex on page four. I think those are, those are appropriate to make changes.
Okay.
Should we vote on that or just, like, what do we do with that?
You can vote on them.
Okay. Does anyone else have other changes and I can make a motion?
I did not go through them and review them in that detail. Um, I read through them.
Wait until the next meeting?
Um. I'm I'm okay either way.
So do you want me to make the motion?
Sure.
Yes, I'll make the motion to approve the April fourth twenty twenty-two minutes with the changes discussed.
In that.
Okay, roll call vote.
Deepa Venkata.
Anna Tashmaniski, aye.
Moser, on a aye.
Jerzy, staying.
All right. And were you there, Kevin?
Uh, I wasn't there, so.
Okay, and Trisha Kendall, aye. So there we go.
And then we've got the May twelfth minutes, and I don't have any changes. Does anyone else have changes?
I did not have changes.
So how does that work? That one Lakshmi was there, it sounds like, right?
Do we, we still have, as long as we have three people that were there.
We're good.
We're, we're good. So I don't think we painted Lakshmi in a bad light in the minutes.
Nope. Um, I'm good. I didn't have anything that I found here.
Okay.
Are we good with the May twelfth minutes? All right, I'll make a motion to approve the May twelfth minutes as they are. May twelve, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Second.
All right, roll call vote.
Deepa Venkata.
Anna Tashmaniski, aye.
Moser, on a aye.
Catherine, Jersey, abstaining.
And Trish, I think that's the whole agenda. Do you wanna make us wrap it up?
I have two more things.
Wait, Kevin, we're there, we're not finished yet.
Yeah, I was there for the cross, so.
So sorry.
All right.
My apologies, Kevin.
Did you vote?
Kevin McLean, aye.
And Trisha Kendall, aye. So I think that covers us all. Uh, and then what were you saying, Anna? Are we done?
No, no, I think we're done with the agenda, but Peter had a few things. Sorry I cut you guys off. Everybody got so excited.
Uh, I just have two real quick things. So uh Kate gave me a couple of corrections on the Mazzi decision. Uh, and I accepted those decisions, I mean, those those edits. Uh, and so I'm gonna be resending everybody out the Mazzi decision um tomorrow morning. Um, and so please look for that, but I think that's ready for hopefully everyone to come in and to sign. Um, thank you so much. Uh, Kate, thank you for the corrections. I did make those minor changes and I think it reads a lot smoother, so and so it doesn't crisscross each other in the middle. Um, and then the second thing is Kevin. Um, I need you to get, I need to get your signature on the um the two thousand and twenty-two roster for the planning board. So if you ever have to sign a A and R plan or subdivision, I have your signature and your signature is reported at the registry of deeds. And so um you may have an envelope tomorrow in your door um with the roster on it, which I just need you to sign. And I'll probably pick that up either next Monday or Tuesday when I'm back in the office. But with that, that's the only updates I have.
All right, anything else from anybody? All right, then we'll have a motion to motion to what? Motion.
Adjourn.
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 That's why I'm, that's why I'm whatever I am, Trish.
Thank you.
Remind you.
Thank you, back up.
Adjourn.
Adjourn, it's an important one.
I'm glad I have this. I'll second that.
All right. And a roll call vote.
Deepa Venkata.
Anna Tashmaniski, aye.
Moser, on a aye.
Yeah, Jersey, aye.
Trisha Kendall, aye. We are officially adjourned. All right, thanks, everybody.
We didn't like having adjourned.
Mondays.
Kevin, do you wanna adjourn?
Yeah, it's adjourned.
All right, everybody.